We're live.
Thank you, thank you. All right, King.
Make sure to unlike your Zoom.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for February 7, 2023. We are, as usual, live streaming on YouTube, Spectrum Channel, I'm all right, cable channel 1303. And also, we have an opportunity, if you'd like to join us on Zoom as an attendee, the link for the Zoom link is on the agenda, which can be found on the Town Camden website under the Select Board under Agenda for this date. As usual, I'd remind people, if you'd like to come as attendee, please do. If you'd like to comment on an agenda item, please raise your hand. That's much preferred. We don't often get to all Q and As, and if they're not addressed, they're not in the record. So please do that, and do not use the chat function. Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to call to order the Agenda for the Select Board, starting with any public comment on a non-agenda item. Ray.
What happened to Jim Bennett?
Ray Andrayson, Cove Road, Camden. Oh, I'm sorry.
Ray Andrayson, Cove Road, Camden. All right. I was going to get up and say some things about the offer that was made at the last meeting of the Select Board about pledges for repairs of Montgomery Dam, but I was informed before this meeting that we need to send a letter of request to be put onto the agenda. And I just think for other people in the future who come up with some idea that should be of interest to the Select Board, that should be noted to them ahead of time. You will get a letter of request to be put onto the agenda.
Ray, what I would suggest you do in this regard is give me an email tomorrow, and I can explain to you in detail what you need to do for the next steps.
Okay, we will.
Deal?
Either I or somebody from the committee will.
Whomever you decide.
Yes, okay, fine.
In copy, whomever you want, that's fine. Please do it that way, and then I can explain to you how we proceed and what go.
Fine, okay. There was a little anxiety about coming up here, for some of us about that. Then I just think it would be a good practice to know that for other people who have other issues.
Of course.
Because I think for those who are tuning in and weren't aware of what happened two weeks ago, is that the Save the Dam Falls Committee came in with pledges of $11,500 for short-term repairs to the dam that we hope will be made, Montgomery Dam, that we hope will be made for a, before the tourist season this summer. So the dam's, the dam looks in its best shape possible, and the falls are going to be in their best shape possible. And I think a lot of us want to commend the town for what is, how the dam looks right now, because the waterfall is looking very good.
Lot of water.
Yeah, as the water's coming over, it looks really great, especially if you're on, watch it from the other side of the harbor.
Right.
So a lot of us have contributed money or contributed pledges of money for that, and we hope the town finds it of use.
Like I said, designate me to contact me, and I'll take it from there.
Thank you.
Right.
So people that are watching on YouTube right now are writing me saying that there's no sound on YouTube?
May have to repeat yourself, Ray.
So Juniper said she's aware of that, and it's being recorded, but I don't.
They can't hear us at all?
Not on YouTube, and so I think we need to, I don't think just saying that it's being recorded and they can watch it later is.
Do we have to switch to link here?
I mean, I can, if, I can do it from my computer. It's a lower quality ver, I mean.
As long as we speak loudly, it'll work?
It will work for people to be able to hear.
Well, it's the only option we have.
Oh, yeah, I'm just.
Thank you.
Don't want to do it without everybody.
Let me give you a minute. May I just do that? Let me know when it's hot. And Ray, Ray, because of that, if you'd like to repeat, you're more than welcome.
I think they will record, like, upload.
Be recorded.
The other version that they're recording here later, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Understood. Thank you. That's why it'd be fair.
I thought it was that there was going to be a proposal, they were going to say what they wanted to spend the money on. That's what you were gonna.
That's what I'm going to tell them when they email me.
Okay.
They haven't been told yet. Um, let's see, we have.
Hold on, what's the date? Two?
Today's the seventh, yes, the seventh. Somehow, we lost Jim Bennett. I know he wanted to come on. I know what happened to him. Well, Tom, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just want to mention to everybody that can't see it or may not see it. Tom is remote across the world, actually, and I want to thank you, Tom, for taking the time at this ungodly hour to participate with us tonight, but it's good to see your shining face.
Happy to be here.
Good.
I don't know why that would be the. Why would that be the?
Oh, you got it, livestream.
Yeah, but it's, um.
Somehow, I lost, completely lost. Well. All right. We're going to proceed, okay? I'm sorry, but any other public comments on non-agenda? I see, it's Peter, I think. Yeah, it's Peter.
Evening. Peter Lindquist, live on Chestnut Street. I'm coming to you as a member of the Budget Committee and a citizen, taxpayer, just like many other people in the room, many of you. I sent an email to Audra earlier, couple days, and I thought it would be helpful for the public and for you folks to hear what I was suggesting. Working on the Budget Committee for a couple of years, I found a lot of time was not really well-used as far as how information is shared. The meetings are quite laborious, if you will. I made some suggestions, and I'd like to share them with you. One is we get some materials out from the department heads soon, like this week, like in a document, an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven document from each department head that says, what are your plans? What are your plans? We don't need to worry about your paperclips and your, you know, things that are not, they're automatic in your budget, but the things that we can work on to do better as a planning item in a budget, I'd like to see that, and I think the Budget Committee people and the public would like to see that, so that when the Budget Committee meets with the town, they actually have some background, as opposed to watching a PowerPoint for 15 minutes from each department on each week that has spells out a pretty picture of a department, but it really doesn't help kind of clarify some of the nuts and bolts that will be decided, oh, wait a minute, five minutes later. If that document came out and said, particular department, geez, we're thinking about doing X. Okay, great. That's great. That's, how does that impact your budget? Is that going to help lower the cost of your department? Are you going to save us money? And if you're going to spend more money, why? We've had some amazing budget increases in the last two years, we, because of salary, what did we call it, realignment? And so I think the public is now looking at a little more flat budget this coming year, and it would be great to see how, oh, wait a minute, the department head can plan for that. If the public saw this material in advance, you would find these Budget Committee questions a lot more pointed and helpful, I think, for a lot of reasons. One is, it always comes up, is, did you, did you overspend your budget this year, or did you underspend? And why did, why did those things happen? And if we knew that, gee, couple of weeks, three weeks in advance, we could kind of talk about that. Wouldn't that be helpful to learn about the amount of surplus or lack of surplus that a particular department has? Okay? Thanks for your time.
Peter, thank you.
You're welcome.
That was the last hand I saw, so with that, I'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the approval of the board members for two dates, December 13th and January 17th. Let's take them separately, please, because I know, Sophie, you had some comments on December 13th, and it's been documented. So is there anybody, do you have any other comments, anybody else on the board regarding the meeting minutes?
No, and I have to admit that I haven't had a chance to thoroughly look at them. After all the comments I sent to Janice, I'm just going to assume that they're, that they're fine.
Okay. If we want to go for a motion, we shouldn't, your comments are incorporated into the final.
Yeah, I think most of, I mean.
I noticed that Roger Aickley's name was spelled incorrectly, but Roger Aickley's name was spelled incorrectly, but, I don't know if that was on the list of things.
It was not.
It was not, because I didn't know his last name.
But you can add that, Sophie, to your motion.
So I can make a motion that we approve the minutes for the.
December 13th.
December 13th meeting with the correction to Roger Aickley's last name.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any other further discussion? All those in favor? And Tom, I'll ask you, because you're remote, to give a verbal yes or no on all votes, please.
Yes.
Thank you very much, because they can't always see you. Anyway, thank you. Then how about January 17th, 2023?
So there's a slight issue that, I'm super happy that I get so much power that I can both motion and second at the same time.
No, that's not going to work.
Yeah, I know. So it just needs to be, I mean, at the end of the adjournment, it needs to be amended that Stephanie French seconded, I didn't. The rest of my comments have been taken into account. The NIFWIF, NIFWIF is N-F-W-F, not N-I-F-W-I-F, so that just needs to be corrected. I think that's it with those two corrections.
Two corrections, correct.
I make a motion that we approve the January 17 minutes with the correction to the NIFWIF grant and to the adjournment where.
I missed that. Good job. I don't know how. A second.
You seconded it? Yeah, yeah, it's okay.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Great. Move on to item number three, which is a public hearing, this from some of the people in the audience. I can see there's going to be, might be some positive participation. So we'll take each one of these after I give a little upfront direction. Terms, the purpose of the public hearing is for the public to provide input to the Select Board and deliberation of whatever matters are at hand. We're to ask anybody who wants to speak for, against, or just speak to the matter, to please come forward one at a time and address the board, address myself on the board. All questions go through me as chair. When all the public has had an opportunity to speak, then I will close the public portion and revert to the Select Board's deliberation on that matter. Please be courteous. Please respect our time as best you can. But with that, I will move on to the first one, which is the application of Black Sea Inc. doing business as Fresh Restaurant at One Baby Landing for renewal of a restaurant Class One liquor license. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to that, this licensed consideration? Not seeing any hands, I'll close the public portion and revert to Select Board decision.
I make a motion that we approve the application of Black Sea Inc. for renewal of a restaurant Class One liquor license. Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion, board? Not seeing any. I'll go for the vote. All those in favor? And Tom? Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you. I got it. If you don't say aye, Tom, I'll just recognize your hand. To the second item, which is the application of Baron Restaurant at Two Wayfair Drive for a special amusement permit. Is there anybody here who would like to speak to that from the public? Not seeing anybody. I will also close the public comment on this one and revert to the Select Board decision.
I make a motion that we approve the application of Baron Restaurant for a special amusement permit.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. We'll go for a vote. All those in favor? Yep, got you, Tom. All unanimous again. The last item is the application of Salt Wharf LLC at Three Wayfair Drive for a special amusement permit. Anybody here from the public wants to speak to that one? And I guess I was wrong about public being here for the licenses. Okay, we will move forward and go to, to close the public portion and revert to Select Board decision.
I make a motion that we approve the application of Salt Wharf for a special amusement permit.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Or, Tom? Yes.
Aye.
Yeah, five zero. Thank you. Would you bring Noah on, please?
Certainly.
Thank you. And we're going, moving on to item four, we have a number of, well, referred to as action items and confirmations, the first of which is the consideration of the proposal we received for the audio visual for this, the French conference room. And we are lucky to have our Noah Cole with us here tonight. Noah, can you read us well?
I can.
Good. It sounds very clear on your end. And, Juniper, I, I, just FYI, for the most part, Juniper and Noah, I have kind of described the proposal in some general sense to the board members in general, but, you know, this is complicated, and I'm sure there will be questions for you all on how you want to proceed with this, but I know that you helped put together a list of criterion, you know, or requests that we, we had really registered about making it user-friendly and all these kinds of things, and that was where the proposal was generated from. Does, does the board feel we need a description of what they're proposing? Is that, we would like to start there?
Yes.
Yeah, I would love to hear from, from Noah specifically about what he understands are needs to be and.
That's great. That's perfect. I love it. Noah, did you get that?
I did, yep.
Oh. You're a little quieter than anybody else on the.
He's only coming from the owl.
Can you speak up?
It's exactly the same as Tom.
Or increase volume?
How's that? Any better?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
So introduce yourself, Noah, because people don't know who you are and who you're with.
Yep, I'm Noah Cole from Stone Mountain Sound, and I was tasked with putting together a proposal for some modifications to the room. And basically, this, this proposal does a couple of things. It replaces the current audio mixer with one that extends the audio components of it, but also adds control element to. That's what is going to help make this room easier to use, more user-friendly. We can talk about what that does, and I think Juniper provided you all a document, at least in the packet, that kind of also explains this too. But I'm happy to go into, you know, any amount of detail that you want. Part of this audio DSP and control system are two touchscreen interfaces. One would be mounted in the location of the TV on the wall, and one of them would be mounted kind of in the back tech area. And these two seven-inch touchscreen interfaces would do different things. They would actually show different things on them, and these are custom programmed for the job, so they can show what you want and not show what you don't want. And that is, the one near the TV would be for self-service, for simple events, for committee meetings where you're using that TV and a local HDMI input, you want to show something on the TV there locally, but you don't want to have more advanced controls, which are needed for the larger, the larger meetings. So the second touchscreen would be back in the tech area, that would have more advanced controls. What, what exactly is shown on these is something that usually comes up in discussion during commissioning. So none of it's set at the moment, but, for example, the touchscreen near the TV on the wall, you could hit one button and it would turn the TV on. It would switch to the HDMI, a new HDMI input, which would be installed on the wall below the TV. It would turn on the, the audio system and would provide audio playback from that HDMI port. That's an example of how it can be set up, but once again, this is a conversation that has to be had about how you want this room to be set up and what functionality you want on that touchscreen, what you want on the other touchscreen, and what you don't want to have for, what you don't want people to have access to on, on that touchscreen near the TV. Like I said, the one in the back can do a bit more, or that's at least how I'm thinking of it, and that would be for someone, whoever's, for whoever's operating the tech, and that, there may be more advanced audio controls on that, more advanced options for what video source is shown where, stuff like that. But once again, that's a discussion to be had kind of later. The other component to this, another component to this too, is replacing the speakers in the room, the audio speakers, to kind of fix the sound. So two, there would be four speakers mounted in the space, two kind of pointing at the dais and two pointing at the room. So there would be a couple of different audio mixes happening here. The ones pointing at the dais would be a video playback, Zoom playback, but wouldn't have the microphones, or they could. If you wanted to, if you're having trouble hearing from one side of the dais to the other, microphones from one side can be added to the, you know, in the speaker on the other side. And then the room would get the same mix essentially, except it would add the microphones from the dais, so if people were having a tough time hearing, there's a little audio lift in the space. So four speakers, two pointing towards the audience, two pointing towards the dais, and then amplifiers for those speakers. Like I said, there would be an HDMI input added to the wall below the TV. This would be in addition to the one that already exists in the space. Another main, major kind of upgraded component to this system is the Video Matrix Switcher, would be a new Video Matrix Switcher. This one has more outputs, because we now have a TV and a projector. We're also sending to quite a few destinations as well. This one actually has three different outputs, so it can show three different things in three different locations. You have more locations that need video than you have, you know, outputs on the video switcher, so some of them would be on the same, basically, on the same output. They'd be sharing that, so the output would be split. And those would be like the streaming, the recording, the Zoom, and then the TV would be kind of all combined on the same output, so they'd all show the same thing. But you could show something different on the projection screen and different on the TV. And the, so the other, the other reason that, that this new Video Matrix Switcher is needed is because it can be controlled by the control system and the touchscreen. So if you wanted to change what was on the projection screen or the TV, you'd do that from the touchscreen or from an iPad app, for example. So this Video Matrix Switcher has additional outputs, and it can be controlled by the touchscreen interfaces. There would be a, you know, the original proposal had a new streaming device as a part of it. However, in, you know, Juniper's latest revision of the document, she's purchased HDMI to USB interface already, and there's a computer, I guess, that's, that's been purchased or is in place. And so that component that was going to be provided in this has already been provided elsewhere. And then there's just miscellaneous other pieces of equipment that go along with supporting that functionality, you know, various HDMI extenders. There's a power sequencer, like I said, the, the system can be turned on and off, powered on and off in the proper order from the touchscreen interfaces. So that would be another thing. There's also an, an equipment rack that's associated with this upgrade as well. This would be an equipment rack, not like it is now, kind of inset into the wall. It would be on wheels next to a new, the new desk. I think there's a desk there. I don't know if there is one now, or if there will be one, but, so this would be external to that, and it would be locking and all of that stuff, too. So that's the major, major functionality in this proposal. Any questions?
Is any of the streaming devices we have being reused, or is that being replaced also? Streaming and recording devices for meetings?
So the recording device that you currently have is being reused.
Yeah, okay. And.
The streaming device that you were using is going to be unused, but there is a new streaming device that was purchased outside of this proposal.
Okay.
By Juniper that is being used now.
Okay. And all the equipment, just to be clear, that's currently in the little cubby in the wall, is no longer in the little cubby in the wall. It's in a, in an equipment rack.
Out in the rooms.
Somewhere near this desk out back. Is that correct? So that's going to be an empty cabinet. Go ahead, Allison.
Okay, so I, I'm not seeing a couple of things. Cost, is that, did I miss that in the documents that we have in our packet, or?
I thought it was, I didn't.
I definitely miss things sometimes, but did anybody else see a cost?
The document that I provided is in the, the document that came from Stone Mountain Sound.
So you can tell.
We have that. We have that.
Thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
Including labor?
It's including labor. At this point, there might be a couple of adjustments because it might have included a streaming device that's not going to be included.
Does that price reflect change that you all made between the streaming device being something we have? A computer we have?
Okay.
Noah mentioned a computer we have.
Yeah, that's where I'm saying, like, we're not including the streaming device, which was maybe a thousand dollars.
Oh, I see.
So it's not really going to change significantly.
So net price is thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, approximately.
So I guess my main concern here is that, I don't know how many years ago it was, maybe three years ago, we went through a similar process where we all acknowledged that things needed to change in the conference room. We needed to upgrade our cameras and abilities. And we spent, I believe we approved twenty-five thousand dollars then. That was a proposal from, there are a number of other proposals. One was, you know, the one that we approved was Stone Mountain and, was you guys. And that, you know, there are a few things that have been better, like the microphones. But overall, it, for one reason or another, it just really didn't meet our needs. And I think the main thing that's been frustrating, not so much just the, you know, the quality of the microphones, the quality of some of the components is good, but the random unpredictable cutting out of the YouTube stream is just so frustrating. I understand that normally we are able to, when that happens, we are able to record something that is in relatively good quality, that gets uploaded later. And for some purposes, that's perfectly fine. But for the purposes of town government, it's just really not. It has to, it can't be failing. And it's not, you know, I've heard all kinds of explanations about it. It seemed like maybe there was a disconnect between what the understanding was on your part of what we needed. And so that's why I was happy to, this time, be able to have, you know, the proposer, the person doing the work actually come in and talk to us. Because there are certain things that are less important and certain things that are more important. We're not producing albums for singing. So if the quality there is a little bit slightly lower, that's fine. But we really need, you know, reliability. And so I guess the fact that we already spent so much, we purchased things that were, my understanding is your recommendation or, and now those things are being deemed like, you know, the problem. We've never had a problem with Zoom. When we livestream directly from Zoom, it's never once gone out. So it's not the internet connection here, it's not, it's not any of those things. So I guess, yeah, that's my, I'm really reticent to spend thirty-five thousand dollars on what sounds like a very similar plan to the twenty-five thousand dollar plan that hasn't worked out.
You want to comment on that proposal of twenty, whatever it was? What was purchased and what, and what, because I'm not, I remember that we did some work, but I remember the cameras that we spent money on, some sound things we spent money on. But I don't remember us doing.
Streaming device was part of that.
We did a streaming device as part of that?
Yes.
And so to that point, to.
A lot of that was this, I mean, we didn't, the streaming system we had at that point was completely broken. The camera controller and the cameras were dysfunctional, like they went black. So there was some urgency. So a lot was spent on cameras, the camera controller and the microphone. So collecting the video in the room in order to be able to stream it out. And we're still going to be able to reuse all of that, that's still part of this system. So we've made great headway into this already. It's not like.
We're not throwing anything away.
No, we're upgrading the video switcher in order to accommodate multiple outputs. And we're upgrading the audio processor in order to mitigate echo cancellation so that the Zoom participants can be integrated into the system. So that people like Noah, who are at home, instead of trying to hear us through the owl or through the computer, our voice being spoken into these microphones will be fed into the Zoom computer in the rack so that people from home will be hearing this quality of audio. And we here in this room will not be hearing Zoom through the owl. We will be hearing it through the new speakers that are going to be mounted on the wall and facing you so that the sound is controllable on the touchscreen or an app here in your hands. If you need more volume from your Zoom participants, you can touch it and just like, go up. And if it's too loud, you can pull it down. So.
That's what I thought.
This.
Right now, nobody's complaining on Zoom. So the people on Zoom are able to hear acceptably well right now. The people that were on YouTube watching, they had zero sound. And that's a really frequent occurrence where I get a text message from multiple people saying, there's no sound on YouTube. There's a bunch of fiddling around back there that happens. Then we start a second stream directly from my computer. And they, or they go to Zoom and they say, okay, now I can hear. It's not awesome, but I can hear. And then later on, the town uploads something. So it just really concerns me that we're going to do something so complex. I'd love to be able to adjust everybody's volume with a touchscreen. But when we're not, we're failing at the basic, like there's just no audio output to YouTube from the town system. Whereas my computer in Zoom is accomplishing that, like, I just don't.
Well, nobody's, I don't think anybody's debating that the current system is broken.
This is why we're trying.
We don't need that level of complexity where, oh, it's like, I can hear Tom right now when he speaks. And we're using the owl and that's not the major problem. It doesn't need to be this level of complexity. We just, we need it to reliably work so that people can watch our meetings live and hear it. I just feel, to me, it sounds like we're failing at the basics and we're trying to go, twenty-five thousand dollars should have been able to get us, like, just consistently basic, you know, all of the basketball games at the middle school are successfully livestreamed from a kid with an iPad. I just.
Noah, can you comment on this dialogue here? You're the expert, you've been involved in this. I'm getting a, I'm not sure if we're doing apples and oranges here or, you know, because what we ask for is to change the system so, quote, "it works." So it's, well, effectively dummy-proof. And including all the things you mentioned, Allison, are absolute concerns. Could you comment on the past work versus this work?
Yeah, so, I mean, the original scope of work is different than what we're trying to do now. So things have changed, you know, from when the original work was done to 2023. There's also been modifications to the system. You know, there's like a TV and some HDMI splitters and some other things, you know, modifications to the system that we didn't do. We also, I don't remember the last time we were asked to come to the site for a service call. So if there is a problem, we're happy to come and we're happy to work with you guys to resolve the issues. But we really need to be on-site to fix, to troubleshoot issues and to fix the issues. So there is, there is a little bit of overlap between what was proposed then and what is, you know, in this proposal now. But one of the things was making it easier, especially for committees that want to show some, you know, a computer, say, on that TV over there. And, you know, the easiest way to make that happen, to turn on the system, to turn on audio, to turn on the TV, to make sure the TV's on the right channel, is to use a touchscreen that gives you one button that does all of that at once. Otherwise, you have to have a remote, you have to make sure the TV's on the right channel. You have to have, make sure that the video switcher's on the right thing, that, you know, the audio component is on the right, you know, the audio mixer is sending to the right destination from the right source.
Right. I know one of the objectives that was written, as I recall, was to make this as seamless as possible. And that does cost money, I understand that. If you don't make it seamless, then we have what we have. And a lot of work has been done by, internally by Audra and company, Juniper, back when by Matt Siegel did a lot of work to get this, what we have set up now, and you, Allison, too. But I, what I'm trying to keep the focus on, whether or not this is a good expenditure to accomplish making this a professional conference room. Obviously, we all agree, we don't want wires going across the room and all that kind of, that was just temporary anyway. But, and that's what this, I believe this proposal represents. I don't pretend to be an expert, but when I, when I read into it, I see a system that is professional. That it is, well, as seamless as it can be, which is no such thing in reality when it comes to electronics. But I don't, I, I've not.
How many hours of Noah's times included here? I mean, that's, I think there's the essential missing component is somebody, like over in Rockport, Jeff Parker is there, like, you know, making sure. And the person that designed the system is listening in, is watching the livestream, is like, oh, I think I did something wrong here. I think I, you know, that's, there's, it's sort of inevitable that there's a certain amount of tinkering that happens.
Sure.
And.
I agree.
The system where we have now is somebody from the public sends a text message to somebody that's hopefully going to notice. And then we're like, oh, shoot, it's not working. And, I mean, how, with you being far away, Noah, or how, like, how could we get the tech support that would be needed?
I don't think we would have an expectation that Noah would be watching every time we go live.
I didn't say that, but who is going to be doing that?
We'd have to talk about town staffing, I guess.
Well.
Maybe that's what we need, is more town staffing and not, the equipment here actually can work, you know, acceptably. It could be much better, but I just am fearful of us improving things that don't need to be improved before we improve the basic fact that nobody knows why the audio isn't working tonight on YouTube.
No.
Shouldn't that be like, we spent twenty-five thousand dollars and there's just no sound on YouTube? I don't, I.
Yeah, I think we can, I think what I'm looking for, from my perspective, is Noah turns to us and says, what this expenditure is going to do is the following, and is that worth it or not? If we keep going over history and history to make, I don't see that as being, personally.
But how do we, how can we formulate? I am not saying that I can't move forward, it's that what kind of, is there some kind of performance standard that could be, you know, after a certain amount of time, it needs, it's evaluated? Is it working as it was intended?
Yes.
To be?
I want Noah to address that. Noah, this is your business, you get, I'm sure you get this all the time, and it's a good question. I agree with Allison, you know, you are in Portland, you are the heart of this, you know, this. What's the, what has worked in, from your perspective, whether it be on-call service or, you know, or, you know, and/or what's included in the current proposal in terms of labor? To bring this thing up to, it's not going to happen in day one. When you program the thing, somebody from us is going to sit down and say, no, it doesn't exactly, we want that to work. And we can, we can help with that. But how would you address that question?
Yeah, I mean, right, so like I said, since this is a custom program and we can show whatever we want and we can set it up however you want, things could, once you actually physically start using the system, things can change. And we're perfectly fine and happy to make those adjustments. Yeah, I think, you know, when, you know, if and when there's, especially if there's an issue, the sooner word notified and the sooner we can get up there, you know, we can get up there pretty quick. We are, we are, you know, in Portland and you're in Camden, but that doesn't mean that we can't get up there, you know, in a, in a, in quick time. You know, I think that having us on-site, you know, in addition to, you know, the initial commissioning of the system and any tweaks that have to happen after that, and that is included in the labor here, in addition to a training session as well, orientation session, that's included with all of our proposals. But, you know, having us on-site once every year, once every six months, whatever you want. We do self-service contracts too, to kind of reset the system. In spaces like this, sometimes what happens is things are tweaked, things are moved, you know, stuff like that, set up beyond our control, you know, sometimes the systems are modified or whatever. And then, you know, I can't guarantee if things are, you know, things are unplugged or, or moved or modified or added to or whatever, that stuff will work. But if we're on-site once a year, once every six months, however often you want, to kind of reset the system to the known working state, once we determine what that known working, you know, that, that state that satisfies your needs are, then we can just keep, we can just reset that. We can say, okay, this has been added, this has been changed, this has been modified. We can just, we can reset it and then, and then we're good to go.
One of the things I'd like to see in the proposal as an idea is, to that regard, is, you know, when this thing has been programmed to do A, B, and C. In the first meetings, meetings we have, to have your involvement or your company's involvement in case we are. It's always when you start riding the bike and you realize the chain is loose, you know, that kind of thing. And you need to have some active involvement of the consultant on, so you, as experts, can see what you can see that needs to be bettered, made more functional. I think, is that, is that included in your proposal?
Typically, it isn't, but that's something we can certainly talk about adding and, or concluding.
All right.
What about a user guide? That was one of the things that was missed, I think, last time, was having a, you know, a user guide of all the, obviously, all the different pieces of equipment have their own manuals that you can look up. But something that's condensed for the, you know, you see at different conference rooms that you can rent. There's like a few pieces of paper that say, do this and do this and do this. Oh, shoot, I see Tom has his hand up.
I think that's a great idea. We need, we're not, we don't, we haven't had the benefit of having an operator for quite a while. You know, that's been a challenge for us, obviously. But for planning board, for the two boards in particular, planning board and select board, it's important to have a relatively simple and understandable user manual that just says, you know, the basic stuff. And, and maybe a couple of people who are trained with that so that they can be locally, so they can be contacted if they have any questions about, I did this and did this, what did I do wrong? Those kind of things are just assurances that we can make this thing operate correctly. I had also mentioned, you know, to Tom Hedstrom, he has a background in some of this stuff, especially the physical construction part. And I think would like to take advantage of some of his skills, just to monitor what's going on, how it's proceeding, if he has the time, poor guy. But that's.
He does have his hand up, can you see that from?
Oh, Tom, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, hi Noah. So for our present system, we have an HDMI input, I believe it's on the wall to my, my lower right where I sit.
Correct.
So you're proposing to add a second HDMI input on the opposite side of the room, room near the TV screen?
Yes.
And then you're going to permanently install some type of input device there?
An input device, no, that would be just a bring-your-own-device type of setup, a computer or whatever.
Okay, so you'd have to bring an iPad or something like that and hang it up or go into that HDMI there? Okay, and then from there, there would be some software that they would have to have to control the system?
No, there would be a touchscreen dedicated for that. This is kind of for like the committee setup type of a thing, a self-service. You know, we're just using the room, we want to show a PowerPoint just for us locally around this table type of a thing. We need to place some, some audio through the speaker system, very simple uses of the space like that.
Okay, so the touchscreen is something that you're providing? And so people could come into the room and set it up the way they'd wanted to, right off of that touchscreen, without even bringing in their own device?
Correct.
Okay. If we wanted to use the HDMI port that we are presently using, I believe, we would just bring a cord and bring that over to where we sit, the dais?
Right, yes. And that would probably, the way I'm imagining this, and once again, this is a commissioning kind of, a conversation that has, happens at the commissioning stage and the programming stage. But that HDMI port on the dais, which you currently have, would probably be controlled by the touchscreen or only accessed by the touchscreen in the back of the room, in the tech area. So that would only be used for when you're using the dais and other configurations like that. Maybe you're using the projection screen. But the HDMI port near the TV is really meant for when you have a small gathering around that TV, you want to show something on the TV itself.
Okay.
It's wireless, works pretty well.
So, for instance, from my laptop computer, I could hook into that existing HDMI system and control some more complex functions. and control some more complex functions? From the, the dais, or would we, we'd be relying on someone in the back?
Yeah, no, so they're, right, no, you wouldn't be able to plug into the HDMI and control anything from your computer. It would be this, the two touchscreens would be controlling the system, one or the, one or the other, yep.
Okay, and one, again, on the wall, and one in the back?
Yep.
Okay.
Sophie, you have your hand up?
Yeah. I, so I just have a question, and it's probably a stupid one, but did we trouble check, trouble check?
What?
Troubleshoot?
Did we troubleshoot the issue we're having now? And is upgrading the only solution?
I, I don't believe we've done a service call, we've been asked to do a service call on this, and, once again, this, this, the proposed system is, you know, or the, the current ask is different than the ask when we installed the initial system. So this is modifying it to meet your current needs, which includes Zoom now, which wasn't a part of the original scope way back when. So we have to change some of these components, that's why some of this stuff is being replaced, because it needs additional functionality to work in kind of the Zoom function, which, after the pandemic, has become a thing, but this was installed before the pandemic, when people weren't thinking about, you know, integrating remotely with folks.
So Zoom is costing us $35,000?
The integration.
It never worked properly before. Our central issue has been intermittent outages of YouTube from the video streaming device. I mean, it's been a, I think on that one issue, at least, Juniper and I sort of agree that that particular device has been very problematic. And I like what you're, where you're going with this, of, I didn't realize that, Noah, that, that you hadn't really come and evaluated, okay, what are all the reasons that, it would be, it would be great to have you see, okay, this is what committee meetings are generally like, this is what select board meetings are generally like, these are the problems that we occasionally have, and just an evaluation of what's going on.
So, sorry, because Juniper motioned to me about my troubleshooting question, and maybe she wants to answer.
Just want a clarification about what needed to be troubleshoot?
I have no, don't ask me. I mean, I, the only, what I do understand from this conversation is that when we use Zoom and YouTube together, we have no sound on YouTube?
It wasn't even Zoom, so this all started before Zoom. Zoom actually.
Improved?
Yeah, because when we weren't doing this at all, and it was just all of it, we were 100% Zoom, we never had a single YouTube outage, and I was doing it from Wi-Fi on my computer on the third floor, and everybody else was, so, it's not Zoom.
So it's YouTube that's creating?
It's that streaming device that takes all the information that, and then the, maybe a combination of the switcher and the, they don't seem to know.
We haven't used it for quite a while.
What's that?
That device.
Which device?
The video.
Yeah, that's what I thought, that's what I thought.
I mean, we just gave, that was, that was part of the original plan that was going to.
So, so, no, but I'm, so basically, and, and, look, I get lost using my own computer in my Finder drive, so I'm, I'm the least tech person around, but, but maybe, I mean, I, I feel a little bit like Allison, like spending $35,000 after having spent $25,000, $60,000 in the span of three years, so I'm, I'm not even done being on the board.
It was more than three years ago, it was almost six now.
I know, when, when.
It was a long time ago.
When Matt Siegel was there.
We need a service, I didn't realize that no service call happened.
You've got to decide, basically, you've got to decide as well, two things. One, is, is doing a, that there's some fundamental problems we have with this room, period, not the least of which, he's mentioned speakers, sound for the audience, video for the audience, sound for us, all of the sound for all of what we speak to, whether it be YouTube, Zoom, et cetera, goes through this, it doesn't now. That's what, all of this is an integration of these, these components that are going to accomplish that. If we don't want that, you're right, don't spend the $35,000, don't do nothing, and just keep it the way it is.
So, but I'm, okay, so I think number one, I think, Noah, you need to come here. To me, I think it's really critical that you come here and, and see what we have, what's, what's the equipment we have. I completely trust Juniper, and she's giving you the correct information, but I do think that, that doing that remotely is a bit problematic, right? So, so I, I think it would be cool. Second of all, I think we need to be very clear that what our goals are. So if our goal is to be able to streamline on, on YouTube using Zoom and different audio, then we need to spell that out very clearly.
It's been done.
But it doesn't work.
But it, yeah, it doesn't, it's, we've never had a good understanding of what.
It's been done, and it's been communicated with Noah, from what I understand, I'm not talking about, it hasn't been done in this room, no, it hasn't, that's correct, you're absolutely correct.
But seeing what the committee meetings are like, and what, because there's a lot that's working just fine now, I have a historic resources committee meeting, we, we, I, I mirror my computer screen to that, and we have Zoom, and that, that works just fine.
That's part of what we're saying, is that you can do that.
Yeah.
It doesn't help us at all.
But the other 99% of people cannot do that.
Oh, no, that's not.
I would really love to see just a, so I am part of a group that did a integration kind of like this. All of our speaking that we do on Zoom and everything goes through the microphones directly into the system that everybody hears, and we spent, I don't know, just under $15,000 for a very small, so I don't think $35 is, I mean, $35,000 is a huge ask, especially since it is integrating what we already have, but I'm not 100% sure without seeing it, what that $35,000 is extra. Like, I understand that you're saying that we're going to need the touchscreens, but if we're, are, are we getting new cameras, is that what?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're going to use the cameras we already have, the microphones we already have, so it's the back office.
It's the equipment with the dollars.
Everything kind of plugs into, just dumb it down here, everything's going to plug into this little brain, and that is the.
And we'll be able to, Stephanie can show something on the screen, I can show something on the screen, we don't have to go through Allison, because right now she's the only one who can.
That's, that's actually not true, it's, the YouTubing part is difficult, but, but other people, anybody, I, I watch them do it all the time, they come in here, they turn on that TV, and they mirror their computer screen to that TV wirelessly.
Cool.
Very, that part of it works very well, it's just the YouTube going out unexpectedly.
Okay, so, so the next step is to have Noah come here, do we want?
Yes, I agree with that.
To do what? Now, let me ask Noah, what, if you came here, if you came here and did whatever, you do feel that you need that, that's the really core question, do you need that to, to underline, confirm your proposal is accurate? Is that, is that, is that a correct statement for you? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm looking at you, because I think you do know what's here. I think you do know where there are problems. Now, you may not know the specific problem that's causing our YouTube sound thing, I don't know, but what, how do you respond to that, Noah?
Well, there's, there's a, so, it wouldn't change, coming to the site might help, help solve some of the current problems, but it wouldn't change my proposal. But, but there's been modifications to the, to the system in the space that we didn't do, and that, you know, so we're adding other variables as we go over the course of the path, you know, since we initially installed the system.
Right.
Which is why it's hard for me to, you know, I mean, that, it can help solve the problem with the existing system, but this exists, this additional functionality that was asked, it wouldn't change the, what I would propose.
That's, that's what I wanted to hear. I just wanted, Tom, did you want to make any comments on this? You, I know you, you already made some, do you have any more comments you want to make?
Yes, I, I think the last comment I wanted to make is if we do go for this, and I'm, I'm struggling to navigate between the meeting and the agenda, so you may not see me now, I don't know, but.
No, we do.
Yes, we're going to need some assistance with training and initialization, and I just wanted to ask Noah how he envisions that happening, if we do go for this system.
Yeah, a training and orientation session is included with the proposal, and that, and how that happens, and who's involved can be discussed, you know, when, once the system is installed and up and running.
I mean, I don't have any issue with, you know, having Noah come here, I'd love him to do it, it's, he's to fix, nothing else to fix what we have now, but, but, but to confirm, but he's already stated, and that's what I thought, that the equipment, they're, of the proposal of $35,000, I'm guessing about $6,000 of that is labor, and the rest is all equipment, right? Probably, in that order of magnitude it has to be. This equipment ain't, is, is long lead time, by the way, typically, and, and it's, it's expensive, but it, it, what my concern is, it just integrates everything, so a complete dolt like myself can come in and not have a real challenge in turning the system on, or, and, and we have 90% assurance that this is going to happen 99% of the time. That, that's where I'm coming from, because I think the, the sound has been, it isn't just YouTube, it's being able to communicate with, better, more effectively with the audience, so they can hear everything from the outside world, Zoom, et cetera, clearly, accurately. We, we've complained about the speaker that was here, it used to work, and I don't even know what, what goes on with that, it used to project our voices from the dais into the, into the audience, it's not even, it's not, it still does, but we, you know what, it's not consistent, because we don't set it up too.
It's going to always take an operator.
Okay, no, 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 this system will take less of an operator, or not, we could be able to turn it, I, I understand, if, I think the only reason we wouldn't want an operator, Allison, is because we want to, we want to play games with the, with the, with the TVs, monitors, the cameras.
When we had those speakers working, you were bothered by the sound of your voice being too loud, and we ended up adjusting it.
My point, my point is, this, I, I'm betting the farm, this will consolidate all of this, so it becomes a professional conference room, as, as we, which we intended, we were on that road, when, you know, you and Matt were, everybody was helping. Also, as a select board member, we, we need to be concentrating on meetings, not on electronics.
I absolutely agree with that, I, this is why I get frustrated, because I don't want to be doing this. I do it only when there are a bunch of complaints, and then somebody says, and then I do it.
I'm complaining, Allison, without you, we'd be dead in the water, so don't take it as a criticism, but that has to go away, and I believe this proposal does that. Yeah, I don't want to spend $35,000 either, but you know what, I don't think you're going to get away with anything less to do it right. And that's, that's a decision you have to make, do you want to bring this into the 20th century or not? Never mind the 21st.
What do we, how can we make sure it works? Like, could there be a period where we say, okay, we're going through this period, where it's the commissioning, where everybody decides, you know, those little details, and then there's the, the, the send-off or the handover where it's, it's determined, it comes back to the select board, okay, it's complete, somehow where we get to say, okay, it's basically doing what? Because that, it seemed to be this continuous thing before, where it was like this.
I agree, I agree. No, I think there could be, in, in the commissioning session, by the way, when, when it's all tweaked and put together, we could have a little workshop here with the select board.
Can we not, can we just like, keep, like, I feel like you need to make a decision and then cut ties, and just let us work with Noah to do this.
I agree, okay, so the fundamental thing, I agree, the commissioning needs to be done well, I think we should consider.
But I guess, like, what I'm saying is, the more you micromanage this, the more it's yours, and the more it'll continue to be yours going forward.
I agree with you completely.
So this is like a good cutting off point, where you make a decision on whether or not we do it, and then.
I agree, I totally agree.
That is exactly what happened last time, where we were told that you just need to go with the staff recommendation, and you need to, and that's what we did.
So we're going to micromanage us out of this problem?
We just handed it over.
I don't think that that's going to be the solution.
It's just like a performance bond, like when a, a project gets done, like Siemens, and there's something at the end that says, okay, it's complete. It's not micromanaging the whole thing.
No, but I think, I mean, I think we, we've, we need to stop this conversation, right?
Yes.
I, I think your concerns, I've heard, everybody shared their concerns, I think Noah, Juniper understands what needs to happen. I think, you know, we should proceed to a vote, and, and decide whether we want to, the issue is that we don't have a budget, so, but, but we have.
We don't have the actual proposal with the final.
No, but so we can move.
You just want a not-to-exceed number, huh?
Yeah.
I would rather have something in front of me to look at.
Well, the proposal is in front of you, it's a question of, we're going to allocate a certain amount of money, not to exceed, if you want, to, to getting this thing done, because the most important thing is, if you want to get this done, Noah can comment, and that the lead time for equipment is long, I, I, you don't buy this stuff off direct, it's probably going to take months, and we, we have a lot, the staff has a lot of time to make this thing effective, it's not going to be cheaper than $35,000.
No, but you, you probably have seen a pro forma with, he sent you something with numbers, right?
Yeah, I sent it to Janice, I sent it to Janice and Audra, they have it, and Bob has it.
I did see something, but I thought.
We met before, I had that for you.
Yeah, I think it was just a miscommunication about, about the narrative.
I expected that that was going to come, that you guys had that all today.
But was it, was it a not-to-exceed price, or?
It was an itemized, it was.
But is it total dollar fixed price on this, Noah, for the $35,000?
Roughly, but once again, some, some of the items in the proposal have been purchased already out, you know, by Matt or Juniper, so some of this would be revised, it would, the price would be probably a little lower.
All right, so, if we, if we were to say it not to exceed 35, it's probably going to come in lower.
Yep.
We do this all the time, Stephanie, because we don't always have, I didn't realize we had some equipment that we had already done, I didn't realize that, oh, we have a computer that's already here, I, I didn't, I didn't get into the detail on any pricing part, but that, that seems to make sense, but fundamentally, it, it's, it's not going to change by more than $1,000 or $2,000 down, that's all, maybe, because a computer is $1,000.
The issues, I'm completely unqualified to assess what equipment is on the pro forma and the price for it, so, so I do understand, I mean, from a procedural standpoint, it's better if we have something in front of us, but.
I agree with you.
I just thought that we was going to see more of a contract sort of thing, not an outline of what was being offered.
Well, when you, when you have a proposal from any entity, you're approving the proposal.
Right, but we don't see the proposal, we just have an outline of what is being asked for, not an actual proposal, though.
We also, you know, we do have a purchasing policy, and I understand that that sounds a little bit myopic sometimes, but there is a process for determining whether it warrants going outside of that policy, then of course, determining what the funding source would be. I can, can move past my negativity from the, the past, but I would like to see, you know, some, just something that's different, some numbers, and it just.
Well, what is it, just rather than beating this thing on and on, to your point, Stephanie, too, what we can do is, we can, if the board wants to, we can approve the scope, and so that we can be awarding a contract to Stone Mountain, and the verification of not to exceed $35,000 paperwork will be in the 21st package.
The paperwork and the contract, especially the service, and I, I think there's, and the training, and a cou, a couple of leaflets, so that we can have people, you know, use it here.
Can we get some of that backup information, Noah, by the 21st meeting?
It's already all in that.
Is it?
Well, we would, we'd have to write up an agreement, but that's fine. But it does itemize that training is included.
You know, it may be silly, but.
That's really all I wanted to see, was just kind of like what was being offered with the equipment, because, I mean, I am not 100% on this either, but just to know what we were being offered in that was really all I was hoping to see.
And, and I think we can, we can condition our approval on that.
Why couldn't, can we just wait and vote on it next time?
We can, but, you know, every, every time, every time we delay something, it takes longer to get it done, and we, we really want to get it, there's equipment that's going to be bought, and it, and its lead time is long, why not take advantage of that and get at least that part moving while we're, while we're getting, but we're relying on a, on a consultant that's giving us the right equipment for the job, and I, by the way, I couldn't judge whether it's correct equipment, I'm not an expert, and get that part moving while we're confirming the, the contract and the, the paperwork that goes along with the, I agree with the commissioning and all those other pieces, if we can get that as a condition to our approval. Because nothing's going to change, we, we do this all the time, and nothing changes between the discussion tonight and discussion two weeks from tonight.
I just don't have a good answer for somebody that asks me, why wasn't there an RFP? Why, why did we go with, you know, a sole source?
It's the same, it's the same reason we do with every technical engineering company that we do proposals for, we don't.
What's the funding source here?
Contingency.
Contingency.
Is this system, can you point to anywhere else that has something similar that's working?
I don't understand the question.
Oh, is there another, another organization, or municipality, or conference room, anywhere that we could say it's roughly similar to this?
Is that a question for Noah?
I can send you a list, I generally don't provide names, and I do have, you know, some references that I can send you, but I need to make sure before I say anything that I've asked them.
Even if it's not something that you designed, just similar, similar equipment being used. Even if it's not something that you designed, just similar, similar equipment being used?
I think references is a logical thing to ask for. That's, companies, they do it all the time.
Like, we are trying to implement credit cards at the transfer station, for instance, and there was this complex system, and they did all this stuff, and then when we finally realized there were no other transfer stations that it was working at, and then this other much more simple system was able to say Cumberland, all these different places, and, but, you know, I don't know, it'd just be easier to.
But so if we give a conditional approval tonight, Noah, you would still not start purchasing anything until you had a signed contract?
Correct.
Correct. And it's positive.
So we could give a conditional approval to move forward a packet and circulate it to us for, you know, and make sure that, so that we're not wasting time. But Noah is not going to call us and say, guys, you decided to refuse the contract, but I purchased up. You're not going to buy anything until you have a signed contract.
But we can generate, that's what we need to get moving, the contract to get.
So we can, so we can make a motion to move forward with the contracting process by circulating to the select board all the documents that have been provided to Noah, and with a conditional approval, not to spend more than 35.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed $35,000 to upgrade the conference room.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that, Sophie, because it's a good point. We want to get moving with picking the vendor, with the concept that's been presented, or not. You know, if you don't, if you like it the way it is, then vote for the way it is, but, you know.
No, that's not what we're saying at all, Bob. We're just saying that we're, so the proposal would be, we're going to say, we conditionally approve to look at the contract later, up to a certain amount of money.
Yep, for this scope of work.
So we're not really approving anything, we're just saying, we're going to be looking at the paperwork to approve it on the 21st.
You're approving the scope of work, and you're asking, and the price, and you're asking me to go back and negotiate a contract with Noah, particularly focusing on the labor, the support.
Commissioning.
The.
Training.
Just all, yeah, all the training, and that's what, that's what will go in front of you for approval.
I feel much better knowing it quite that simple. I was still trying to put it all together, and I'm just like, this is not making any sense to me.
There won't be any more conversations about microphones or audio mixers, or cameras, or anything like that.
Right, that's the fun, that's the core. The core of it is a direction for the conference room, and to do the paperwork, and not to exceed $35,000.
I thought Noah said that in the, what was it, there's a phase that was going to happen where, oh, commissioning, where details get worked out, where, so it did seem like at that phase there would be, I'm not clear, I guess, on what, you said several times during the presentation, this would still be decided.
At the commissioning phase.
Was it the commissioning phase, or?
Yeah.
How would that, I think mostly what's important to me is just making sure that it includes the committees, like it includes.
Well, we've got to be careful on the cooks we have in this.
But it includes monitoring what actually happens.
Clarify that, that that happens in programming, so during the installation, they work with the programming to create these tools on the touchscreens, so we can decide. It's not going to change the scope of the contract, it's not going to change the item that's being purchased, but it's at the installation point, when we say, we want this, but we don't want this. After we install it, we can be like, oh, sorry, we actually didn't want this, but we did want this control on that. So it's not something that gets fixed in the contract, the commissioning of what happens on those touchscreens. That's what he's referring to. It has no effect on.
You're tweaking the touchscreens to do what we want them to do.
Is there going to be a room microphone so that, like, are we going to still be restricted to these eight microphones?
Yeah, we're not changing the microphones.
Because that's one of the big problems.
We need more, actually.
Well, that's the problem, because that thing only will handle eight.
No, but there are other conference rooms that have conference microphones that can be used, where it might not be the most amazing quality in the world, but it does a reasonable job of picking up the ambient sound in the room when, so that not every, I mean, for example, when the budget committee meets, that's a big problem generally, when, because there, anytime there are more than eight people.
I guess, are we designing a church for Easter Sunday, or for like, the normal Sunday?
Exactly, exactly.
But look, Audra, if Tom and Bill are here, one of us has to share a mic, so right here, and that's not.
Well, we're not, no, we're, because we're not going to have to mic.
You're gaining one.
Mic deal, okay, okay, fine.
No, that is an issue.
I mean, Owl does pick up things, and it does a job that's acceptable.
So I think, okay, so I think at this stage, it might be useful, I'm going to make a proposal, that we do approve, that we move forward with the contracting process, that we're going to leave Audra and Juniper to do that? Juniper, you're involved in a.
Audra, when you're probably.
Audra, you're doing that. I'm just asking, I'm not, I'm not telling, I'm asking. With Noah, not to exceed $35,000, coming from the contingency fund, and we want to see a contract with a training plan, a support plan, training support material, commissioning session, maybe one or two, I don't know, Noah, you know, I have more experience than we do in that matter, so we can fine tune the usage of this room. I think if anybody else has concern that they want to see in the proposal, maybe they can share it with Audra by email, but I just, I'm not sure we're making any progress, and I think we need to move on from this topic.
Motion made in second. Further discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three. Tom, yes, I see your hand up. No.
Aye.
Aye, no. You raise your hand.
No, I did not raise my hand.
Who wants to raise your hand? No.
Oh, normally we say all those opposed.
All those opposed. Four to one. Thank you very much, Noah, thanks for the time, thank you.
Thank you, Juniper.
Sorry.
Thank you, Noah, thank you, Audra.
Let's move on to our next item, which is the approval of the hawking and peddler license for Mark Bradstreet for selling live lobsters in the public landing. I think, Mark, you want to, might as well participate. If you're a call board, we had discussed this meeting a couple of meetings ago, I think it was two meetings ago.
Before Christmas.
Was it?
Yes.
Okay, it was before Christmas. And we had, we had made a number of concerns at that meeting, as well as a concern about, we had some kind of a station we were contemplating for this sale on the landing area, which was near the fisherman's lift, in my mind. And that's where we had left it, and to carry it forward to this discussion.
So, good evening, Mark Bradstreet, local lobsterman, here to clarify or answer any questions you have. I've provided information to Audra and Janice, and that's over the last two months in email. They consist of photos and sketches, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Questions, comments, board?
Sketches and photos over the last two months. I saw in the.
In the packet?
In the packet.
It's hard on the PDF.
Yeah, I know.
So I.
Excuse me.
Was a photograph of a, like a, more of a shack than what we talked about?
Sophie.
Describe, like, I see, is this of, is this in?
That was added today, and that's an artist sketch of what the actual lobster stand would look like.
So in the packet, I saw more of a building?
In the what, Allison?
In the packet.
The initial letter, written over four or five months ago to Steve Pixley, had a picture of a wooden shack that said lobsters on it. It was only to give you a rough idea.
I think that's in the, I think that's in the packet, I think we have that.
That is in the packet, but as we've moved forward.
Page 32?
Yeah.
No.
Sorry, I didn't realize there had been so much back and forth, like so much discussion and had gone on, and the.
Me either.
The first I ever heard of it was, you know, when it was, came to our meeting last time.
Right, December, December 17th.
Right, so I apologize for.
That's okay.
It sounds like you've been doing a bunch of back and forth work with town staff, and.
There are new pictures in there, and if you haven't seen the pictures, Sophie asked for the pictures.
I did.
That's why you have the pictures.
Yep, understood.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So, and I'm sorry, Mark, I'm scrolling, I downloaded the PDF, I'm scrolling.
Page 32.
Yeah.
Page 32. They're awfully big pictures, mine at least, but while they're doing, go ahead.
So there's a, there's a fold-up table, there's a picture with a white fold-up table and a lobster crate, and that's what it's going to look like, with a panel above it saying lobster.
With that.
It's kind of like this.
A small red building.
Yeah.
I don't see a small red building.
Here I do.
You have to keep going up.
Oh.
Page 32. Keep going up.
Page 32. Sophie's having navigation problems.
Well, I'm having problems, because I see this.
That's the red building.
But that's not what you're building, you're not building what, the picture that says a shack with lobsters open.
Audra, do you want to handle this, or should I? There were qualifiers on the photos, and it distinctly said, this is not the final product. This is, to answer Sophie's question, where is the location?
Yep.
There was a follow-up photo, I placed the lobster trap exactly where it's going to be.
And I see that.
Page 35.
I see that. With the white folding table, and the winch is on the left-hand side when you look at the parking lot, okay.
And there's one more photo, if you keep scrolling down, that has a single lobster trap, and there should have been text under that, that I gave to Janice, that said, this is the exact location. And if you remember, on December 17th, I said it was four feet by four feet.
Yep.
The white table you see is six feet wide, so it'll be smaller than the white table.
Oh, oh, kind of, kind of the size of the trap.
Very compact. If you need dimensions, I'm giving you exact dimensions.
Four feet wide, three feet deep, eight feet, eight feet high.
It's about one half of the width of a nine-foot parking stall.
Half the width.
It's about half the width.
Do you want to see the numbers?
Okay.
Stephanie, do you want to see that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Pretty good with the concept that's being.
Okay, and I had an additional question, live lobster don't need to be refrigerated? There's no health and safety issue? Because what, my understanding is if you sell them live from the boat, that's fine, but is there, because at one point you also said there would be a cooler refrigeration issue, do you need to be licensed by the state of Maine for health or safe food handling?
Yeah, his license is in there, it's page 30.
I'm licensed as a lobsterman to sell lobsters.
Right.
It would work against me to sell dead lobsters.
I'm sure.
Yeah, you think?
If I ever sold a dead lobster, I lose a customer.
Oh, more than that. I think the question is, when you say cooler, is this like a Yeti cooler kind of thing? It's not refrigerated, it's not.
The coolers could be sold to people that are traveling, and they take the lobsters with them. The cooler I was talking to you about was actually the table. It would look a lot like an old Coca-Cola chest freezer, or cooler.
Okay.
You could open it from the top, you can put crates of lobsters in it.
Right.
And you can pick from that. It may or may not be plugged in. If you don't want to handle electrical, I'll deal with ice. If Tom, as Tom suggested, I could have a meter, and then I would pay the town for the electricity.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the meter part, to tell you the truth, but, okay, well, I think the major question had been the physical, but I still have, and it keeps butting me in the back of the head, and it's nothing to do with you, Mark, it has to do with the landing. You know, for a long time, we've, I and many others have commented about the issue we have with, and have had with the commercial tables for the day sellers and others, that we, by agreement, we still have. It's always been a source of frustration, it's wrestling between, one, you know, people using the landing, which is not huge, and not making any kind of a, and I can't think of another word, but arcade, and that's a childhood thing for me, because I remember Nantucket Beach in, in Hull, Massachusetts, there was an arcade, and it had all kinds of hawkers on it. And there's always been a resistance to that, but that's just one thing. The other thing is, and probably larger for me, is the, is the, what we do for one, and I mentioned this last time, what we do for one, we got to do for all, that scares the heck out of me. It really does, because you are and will be successful. And it would take a fool not to see that. And if I'm one of your cohorts, I'm going to want to do the same thing. And that's, and I would be, in my seat here, I'd be reticent, if not handcuffed, to say yes to anybody else that came in, but we have to be fair. That still lingers in my chron, again, I still have heart, it's just me speaking, I have heartburn with that. By the way, it's our bad. It's our bad, because we've had other people come, approach us with ideas about fun things to do down at the landing, and we kept saying, well, we need to, we need to get a handle on the, on the vision, if you want to call it, of like, landing. We've never done it, because of good reasons, by the way. The town is busy as heck, we've got other priorities, we've got other blah, 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 and it's a mega project to, and, and the landing has been investigated more times than Carter's Little Liverpills, over the decades, by the way. I've seen so many proposals and ideas about the landing, they were done by very professional architectural firms, we've never done anything with it. So I just want to, I want to preface, because it's not about you.
I understand some of the history, and I appreciate your position.
Yeah, well, thank you, but that's just.
I do have two thoughts that might help you, might help the board.
Yep.
Number one, I don't like the label hawking and peddling, but.
Nobody does.
But our own kind go to Augusta and Portland and say, we're peddling, so we're kind of downgrading, we're really not hawking and peddling. We're not going to badger people into buying lobsters.
It's the title of our license.
It's so terrible.
It's the title of our license.
Stuck in this ordinance. Very right, it's like a relic of the, you know, 19th century.
It's a town vote to change it.
You know, it's not my native language, so I had to look it up to understand what it meant.
It's like vitillers license.
You explained that, yeah.
Vitiller, it's a French word.
Vittles anymore.
But this one has like negative, like, vittler license, we don't even know what that word means, but.
It's a French word, I can tell you what it means.
Hawking, we've never heard of.
Yeah, hawking.
Make a motion to call us vendors, just something neutral.
It takes actually a town vote, the problem, that's why it's so slow, it takes a full town vote to change it, so if we could all change it tonight, I think we probably would.
I think we probably would.
Yeah, one thought I had, you could really quickly streamline your process. I think if you tied the fisherman's float permit and fisherman's dock permit, you tied a hawkers and peddlers license option to that, and that each stall that we park in can serve as a hawking and peddling, if, if you wanted to make it really streamlined, I go in to pay my $1,000 or $1,200, oh, let's add $50 and get a vendor's license I could sell out of the back of my truck. That's what our industry is going to, they're going to parking lots in Walmart in Augusta and Skowhegan. We're trying to get a better price so we can stay in business.
That's true, well, right in Rockport.
In Rockport, absolutely.
Right down by the...
We're, we're having a middleman crisis in the lobster industry.
Oh, I don't doubt, I understand. It's, it's a real conundrum. It's a real issue. We get it, actually, but like I said, I just, I have, I have the fear that this is going to be one step in the wrong, maybe one step in the wrong direction for the, the landing in terms of its use and further, impeding and otherwise making individuals who want to go there for the joy of the harbor uncomfortable. And not that you would do anything personally. You wouldn't be standing with a loudspeaker saying, "Buy my lobsters or I'll sue you." I, I get that. It's, it's not, this is not personal. Please understand that, Mark.
When the tour guide with the walking tour and his microphone goes by, he often encourages me to do some kind of a lobster thing because he wants to showcase the harbor. So we work well together now. It's just that...
I get it.
I, I don't have a, a legal footprint, if that's, if that's such a thing.
Yeah.
But if you give me a try, I think I can, I think I can bring the fishing waterfront alive at Camden even more than it is now.
Possibly.
So I guess I want to make sure I understand because I see what you do now and I don't have a problem with that. I'm not a hundred percent certain what is legally needed in order to be able to do that. I think by being a lobster, you already have the right to sell the lobsters from the boat, from, you know, all of that isn't anything you need from us. Is that accurate?
The quick and simple distinction is, everything now is built on my truck.
Oh.
My sign is on my truck.
Oh.
That's why you never saw me go through signage.
Oh.
It's on the truck, yeah.
Who wants to...
I mean, I've seen it. It's a big sign. It's on the truck. People come.
As long as...
They go down to the boat when they want to. They chat with you. They, and I'm, I'm okay with that.
So I'm officially not on town property.
Right.
Right.
I'm asking to be on town property.
I get it.
Okay, so I think, yeah, I mean, for, I think for me, it's the same as for Bob, a little bit, that we do get lots of requests and we've, and I, I mean, I've gotten an earful from a couple others in a similar industry to yours or the same one that, you know, the idea of theoretically wanting to do something like this and, you know, how much space is there really for, for structures? So I, I see that as an issue because if we, there literally just isn't enough room to say yes to everybody taking up permanent real estate there. But I think the major thing for me right now is, is just the state of the boardwalk, the state of the public landing. It's, after the last storm, it was just ravaged, basically. There's conduit that is, have been ripped down, that's hanging, that's, there are, you know, extension cords, there are missing boards, there are pilings that have been split, there's sinkholes, there, it's just, it's... We got a lot of complaints about it last year and this, of course, is, none of this is, is your fault, but to, to me, when people ask me about, you know, what's the plan for fixing this? And I don't know what the, like, temporary plan is just to get that kind of functional for summer. And I think it's one of those cases of we have, we need to take care of our own house and, and, you know, clean up what we have before we put more things there. If that, I mean, that would have been clear, very much in the path of the, of the flood in December, had it been there. And we had a lot of junk there too that probably should have been moved out of the way, so I guess I just feel like we need to clean up our act a little bit before we add to the, to the, to the pile.
Ironically, you've outlined one of the reasons why I want to be in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's hard to get to my boat.
Yep.
Yep.
And that last storm was proof enough when the high tides. No, I couldn't get to my boat.
I wouldn't either.
Because of...
Because the gangway lifted.
Right, right.
And offset.
Yeah, yeah.
So I had to get to a ladder and if you ever tried to carry your lunch and everything else you have and walk down the ladder that has, that has ice on it...
Oh, I've carried a lot of things down that ladder and it's very terrifying depending on the amount of ice or slime or...
So the park, the parking lot is safer for me and my customers and I think for the town of Camden, you are on my insurance policy, so that's one of the things you asked me to do.
You do bring the lobsters up to people, don't you?
I, I think, I, I mean, I, I personally, I'm going to say something very controversial here. I realize this. But I think, you know, we have, the most valuable part of the town is a parking lot. It's completely ridiculous that we don't take more advantage to make it more easily accessible to businesses. Parking lot is a parking lot. We should have something much better downtown. So my opinion and, and the way I'm, I'm looking at what Mark is proposing is, number one, we could do that on a temporary basis. And that would give us an idea of who else wants to come and do business on the landing.
I can tell you, you're going to get another one at the next meeting.
Sure.
Absolutely.
But, 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 but we, we've al, we also said at the December seventeen meeting that we cannot stop making changes while we have a complete plan for the landing because that makes no sense because we're not going to have a new plan for the landing for another, what, two, three years?
Could be.
Right, and, and these are issued on a yearly basis or you can revoke them whenever you, so I mean, it's, it's not, you don't have to look at this as sort of a permanent thing.
Permanent thing.
Other comments?
But that's like, I don't know if you can see that. Tom has his hand up.
Tom.
Thank you. So we, we asked Mark to define, the reason why we asked him to come back and we deferred to a later date, the last time he came before us, was because we wanted to look at the physical structure that he wanted to build on the landing. We weren't focused so much on the grand plan for the landing or anything else. I think we've, we've done him a disservice by bringing him back. He's brought back the information that we asked for and now we're focusing on other things that could have or should have been brought up the first time he was here. If we were going to deny him, you know, what he's asking for, for those reasons, we probably should have brought those up the first time. I understand there's some things that you can do upon reflection and, and we're certainly within our rights to do that, but he has answered the questions that we've asked him to answer. I also think that, you know, we should be encouraging commercial fishing in Camden Harbor. This is an opportunity to show Mark and the other fishermen that we support them in our harbor. It's certainly a part of our heritage, our history here, and from what I understand, we've lost some of that. I think, I think having a good commercial fishing industry in Camden is also good for the tourism industry. I also want to point out that he's only asked for a one-year trial in this. And if you do go for one year on this, it gives us a good idea about whether this is feasible or not. If we do have other interest from other entities or fishermen for the public landing, we'll have an opportunity to adjust. Maybe, maybe someday this turns into a, a small fisherman's co-op or something of that nature where anybody who has commercial fishing licenses running out of Camden Harbor has some opportunities for that space and, and like Sophie says, maybe that space can expand. Maybe we lose a parking spot or two in the future and create something that's really great for our businesses, for our town. Again, in a historic industry for Camden and the coast of Maine.
Thank you, Tom. Stephanie?
So I am one hundred percent on board with commerce and a working waterfront. To Allison's point, I am very concerned at the state of the entire area down there. And in thinking of this, something just doesn't feel like we're caught up to this grand idea. It's a great idea. Just don't know if we're caught up to having people do this on the landing yet. And I know for a fact that I have a couple other people that have come to me and said, you know, "Well, can I set up my table to sell my bracelets that I make? Can I, you know, sell my jewelry that I make there?" And I'm like, "Well, put in an application. Who knows? You know, the sky's the limit." It's, it's, it is a great opportunity, but I am, I, I am very concerned with the state of the, everything down there. My thought was a sign, a big sign that you could put up that is hung in a stable manner that says, "If you do not feel something to the effect, if you don't feel comfortable coming down to the boat, call this number. We can come to you." Or something like that. That could also have it so that we could, anybody else that wanted to, you know, Bill, Joe, Schmo, wanted to add their little sign on there, "Hey, call my number if you want to." Everybody kind of has their guy. And I think, you know, I got my guy. I got my guy for this and my guy for electricians and all of that, so I know the guy I call. So I feel like your guys, you would be the guy for your people. That, to me, is more appealing at this point in the game, seeing as where we're at with everything down there, is to kind of think of a signage thing that might help you do what you're doing without adding more to the landing. That's just my thought process on it.
Thank you for your thoughts. The de facto situation is just as you described. We're already doing that.
Right.
We've already done that. It, it works.
It works.
The difference, the difference is it's safer and it's better for the town, for the customer, and for the lobstermen to do what I'm proposing. So we all benefit. And no ill intent, but bracelets are very different than iconic Maine lobster. We represent a five-hundred-million-dollar industry in the state. I, I feel very passionately that we can bring good things to the waterfront in form of lobster and a tourism and a visitor's experience, both with our stand and our education and the efforts we put forward.
I really do feel you're doing that. I mean, I agree with everything that you're saying and I watch it with the, it is a tourist attraction. It is all of those things. It's, I think your presence there has added a lot to the, to the harbor, to the experience that, that people have. And I definitely want to continue to support that and find ways of expanding it and find ways of, I mean, we've got a whole Elver fishery too that's about to, to start. I mean, that's just completely neglected by the town. It's like pandemonium down. It's, you know, somewhat of a free-for-all as, as you know. So there's a lot we could be doing to support the commercial fishery. I just, yeah.
A tough one. Well, Mark, just give me one break because I have one person that wanted to speak in the public. Peter, did you want to say something? Just stand down for a minute, Mark.
No, he's fine. He's fine. I, I think Mark brings up a great point, but you all at the board and our leadership in town have, have mentioned this two, three, four years ago over and over. We don't have a plan. We need to come up with a plan. What's the long-term plan down there at the waterfront? Sophie brings up a great point that, here, the town owns a piece of property. It happens to have a little chamber of commerce, you know, unit in it. The town has not taken advantage of owning this piece of property right at the head of this ridiculous parking lot to take advantage of these kinds of opportunities. It's, it's, here, here's a vendor who wants to go out. Okay, so there may be some other ones who want to come in after him. Well, make him, make him pay the town. If it's real successful, make him, make him pay so that the next person who's interested goes, "Oh, this isn't going to be a, it's, it's more than twenty-five bucks. It's going to be two thousand dollars." Or explain to the town and explain to Mark, "What is the relationship with this harbor dogs? How long has that gone on? Where's the, where's the documentation with that? I mean, do we have a copy of that? What, what, how long is that list?"
We have a license agreement.
And, and is it, does it expire every year?
It is a three-year agreement.
So they get three years?
It's revocable though because the select board is only allowed to commit to one year technically, so any future select board can...
It's the same with the windhammers. I agree with you.
But I guess, no, Peter's got a good point and most, most places would carve out, like in Rockland, for example, they've got like three spots.
Exactly.
They reserve for vendors and they pay three thousand dollars a year. They have to bid on them. It's a whole...
And, and this leadership, this, this leadership statement of, "We, we, we can't do this, you know, just, it's going to take forever. It's going to take forever." We have heard this and talked about it. We have plans. There's plans for this harbor park, harbor area. It, it talked about for the last ten years. We need to just make a decision. It's okay to make it temporary, a year. It's okay. If somebody gets upset, I'm sure you folks can handle it.
We're going to try. I mean, so I...
Ten years ago, the town voted on the downtown master plan. All the voters voted on that. And it said many things that the town was supposed to be doing, like fixing and creating certain sidewalks, investigating better uses of the public landing, implementing paid parking because of this incredible resource that we have that was felt to not be being well utilized. Those things are all difficult and the public landing, we started, we're doing a pilot paid parking program down there. That was a recommendation that all the voters agreed on and everybody just ignored it for ten years, eight years, because it's really difficult to change things in Camden. So there's a lot of that that's, that's happening and we are trying to move forward with some of the recommendations that the town has voted on. But just trying to figure out how much is, how many of these things can you take on all at once is a thing that I think we're not, I'm not sure.
That's not, that's not more.
I think it's a, it's a different conversation.
It's a totally different conversation.
I think, I think we need to address Mark's request.
Exactly.
He's, he's, we, we asked some questions. He gave us some answers.
He did.
I think it's probably time that we put this to a vote. I mean, because we can discuss, you know...
Some, some kind of a proposal and...
So I, I make a motion that we approve Mark's, what is it, what kind of license?
Hawking and pedaling license.
Hawking and pedaling. I'm, I apologize.
Vendor's license.
Well, it's a hawking and pedaling license for one year as a temporary tryout to sell live lobster in a shack according to the specifications that you shared with the select board.
Can we further modify that, Audra, to restrict it to just one trial, one contract only this year and no others?
It's already only for...
It's already in there. It's one.
Yep.
I mean, I, I mean for anybody else coming in and wanting to do the same thing next week.
No, you can't, because you're voting on his license. If you want to, you're going to have to, people are, have the right to apply, but you have to make a decision on them, just like you're doing with Mark. You can't do like a blanket ban of all of these.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Okay. You made the motion. Do we have a second?
I made the motion so we can discuss or second more. Let's move forward.
Do I have a second? I'll, I'll second it, force it to a vote.
What, what were the specifications that I saw a bunch of different?
One year.
No, no, no. So he said according to the specifications.
Yeah, so, so he gave us the, he gave us the dimensions, the size, the place, the signage, the table. I mean, everything is in the packet, so basically every...
I guess I was confused by the diff, so many different pictures and things.
There is because we never closed on the electrical and non-electrical.
Yeah, I, I mean, so that I can't...
Okay, so just...
One copy.
Well, I did get one, just to me this looked more like artwork than...
It is.
I mean, I'm happy to modify the, the...
Motion?
The motion to include electrical. I mean, Tom, that was more your specification. If, if it needs to be plugged in, that we have a meter for the town, I mean...
Yeah. Tom, you had your hand up. Did I miss it?
Yes, so the way those work, for anybody that's unfamiliar with them, it literally is, it just goes in line with the cord plug and it gives a digital reading of the amount of usage that's going through that cord. So if he only plugs one appliance in, it just gives a digital reading of the amount of power that that appliance has used. So it's a very simple electrical device and it would be something that Mark would just have to monitor and let the town know how many kilowatt-hours he used on a monthly basis.
There's already competition for that outlet. There's an outlet there that is...
Any other discussion on the motion? Stephanie, no, no, no?
No.
Okay, then we go for a vote. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed to the motion? Motion doesn't carry. I'm sorry, Mark, but keep in our face, please. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you. Onward to, by the way, are you guys here about the Wolfies?
Yes.
We're going to go to that next without, with no more further delay. I'm sorry. If, if the board agrees, I'm going to just do an agenda switch to get a approval of a new taxicab driver for Wolfies Wheels again. Wolfies is growing.
Well, we've had some bumps.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I was, wound up in the hospital three times between December seventh and January thirtieth.
I'm sorry.
And we lost a little bit of business, but I have been driving all February and we're gaining ground again.
Good.
And we're ready for another driver. And I will introduce to you Andrew LaBoy, who put the application into the town. And at this time, I would ask for your approval and ask him any questions that you would like.
Any questions, board?
I just have one. Has he been approved from your insurance?
Uh, yes.
Okay. John wanted to know. Everything I need to know.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Tom? No? No, no?
Sorry to put you through all this.
Yeah, you get to hear a lot of stuff.
He is an experienced taxicab driver, so, yeah.
Good, well, welcome.
We're not...
Be patient with people that won't stop talking about it.
Yeah, and, and he is going to be driving the late night shift, so...
Oh, oh.
That's great.
The quiet times.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I second.
Motion made. Second discussion. Anybody? No?
I just have one suggestion, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I really don't like interfering with people's business plans, but I, I saw, when you guys go to the airports, either Portland or Bangor, I think there's a high demand for that and I, I need to use that and my husband does and I would completely be willing to share with someone else because I think we have a resource.
We would be happy to do that if two people, you know, wanted to go at the same time.
Exactly. And so, or even let people know, "Hey, there's a ride to Portland if you need, you know, we still have one spot." I mean, I, I think that would be a super help to a lot of travelers.
Most of the airport runs that we've done have been people calling at the last minute.
Yes.
Whether other rides fell through or, you know, "Can you take me to Portland by two o'clock this afternoon? Can you pick me up at six AM and have me in Bangor by eight?" You know, things like that. So, and, and, and I've encouraged, anytime I wrote anything about it, I encourage them, "Please make the reservation as far in advance..." So, and, and I've encouraged, anytime I wrote anything about it, I encourage them, please make the reservation as far in advance as possible. And I'm not doing it, but, you know, that's okay. It's cost the same whether I take one or four.
That's a very good point.
Yeah.
Well, all that said, we're going to move to a vote. All those in favor of approval of a taxicab driver, please raise your hands. And Tom has raised his hand also. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
And thank you, guys, and keep it going.
Thank you.
And stay, stay well.
Thank you.
Going back to item C, which is the license agreement for the existing second floor deck and patio at 10. Baby, a little intro, Audra?
Yes, so if you look at the As Built survey that we've included in the packet, so it's page 41, you can see that in the upper left-hand corner of the town's boundary line on the public landing, we actually own the brick patio area that's in front of this, what will be this new restaurant. But there's, there's been a few different restaurants who have been there over the years. But it's been used as sort of an outdoor dining area for the restaurants that are located there. So it's actually on town property and because it is, we need a revocable license agreement to allow them to operate from there. And so it's a very similar mechanism to like, you know, for example, when, when people are, you know, building fences or putting utilities in the, in the town's right-of-way. So that's what, what this is. It would allow that business to use that outdoor space and formalize the agreement between them and the town to do so.
And the agreement has a price on it?
It does not. We do not have any.
Fees.
Fees for revocable license agreements, which I would recommend that we consider applying some to because they do take quite, quite a lot of time, like much more time than most permits, licenses.
This current draft does not, that's why it does not have.
We don't have a head of power to charge it.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
We don't have it, like the legal authority, is that what you mean? The head of power?
Yeah.
A head of.
Yeah, that's a nice job.
Ooh, that's a new one.
Fancy.
Is it, Audra, sorry, is, they want to build above the brick path?
No, no, they don't want to build anything. They just would be using that area. So.
I misunderstood that as well.
Yeah, I thought they were building a deck.
It's been ongoing for, I mean, it's, it's, it's been happening and nobody really, it probably.
So they put tables?
What were the, I just can't remember the names of the businesses that were there before. Does anybody remember?
There was Fire, was it Fireside?
There was a Mexican restaurant there.
Paulina's Way.
Christina's Way, Paulina.
Paulina's, whatever the heck it was, restaurant, then it became pizza place with.
El Ancla, was that?
Oh, yeah, El Ancla. Good.
No, it was, was here.
Yeah, The Anchor, El Ancla, and then.
So it's here.
And then the place that.
It's not a pizza, or a pizza place.
That was the Fire, that was Ben Curtis.
Ben Curtis's place. It went through two pizza places.
Sorry, so. Of businesses there.
Yes.
It's been used.
Let me point to it.
Yeah, because I see the brick patio.
Yep, that's, it's there because this is our property, so they're getting licensed to use that.
To use that, not this deck here?
Nope.
I thought that's where, okay, okay, I get it.
Yeah, there's like a balcony above it, too.
So what they're going to do there? They're going to put tables and things like that? So, but their cars, I mean, it's always a nightmare parking situation there. Is this gonna?
There's always been tables there.
Always been tables?
Well, the pizza place had tables there. And, yeah, it's narrow for a car to go, but it's, it's a one-lane road anyway between the parking there, so it's nothing new, but.
Not everybody knows that.
Every, every restaurant that was there had minimal outdoor seating with planters separating them from them and the cars.
It really feels like private property. It's, it's very similar in some ways to the ones over here.
We, we do not.
Could we charge them rent?
Nope.
So they just, for free, they're gonna have it?
Yeah, so anyway.
That's how these things.
That's how they are.
Now, you, and you're saying we don't have the authority?
Well, I mean.
We don't with the, we don't have a. So this is a, this is a, like the way that Bill Kelly's described it, this is a legal culture that's very particular to the town of Camden. A lot of other places don't do it this way.
Isn't that quite a quote for?
That's a back and forth.
So.
This is a five-year license?
Basically, we've always done it this way and.
That's, I mean, when it comes to, you know, businesses or any, any private party that wants to, or is, how do I, I don't want to put it as an intrusion, but has kind of crept into the town's property or the right-of-way.
Never mind, Jeremy.
This is how you handle it.
This is a five-year license, Audra?
It's a revocable license, so you can revoke it at any time, but it's.
Tom, did you have your hand up?
No, I was saying Jeremy did, but he took it down.
I mean, I didn't, but I, I, my opinion here is, I mean, I'm, I think that this isn't a whole lot different than what we saw with Mark just a moment ago.
Thank you, Tom.
We're allowing a private entity to utilize town property or we're talking about it. And I, I get the feeling that the, that this one's going to get approved, whereas the last one didn't get approved. And I don't, I see it, I see this as a comprehensive thing where we need to, we talk about having a grander plan. This has been brought up multiple times during this meeting alone for, for this space, the public landing and maybe other town spaces as well. And we're, we should allow them to continue the use of it because it's part of their business plan for now, but we should have something in place. These, these spaces should be rented. If the town owns them and they're being used for private purposes, they absolutely should be a revenue generating thing for the town.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was reading this. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, a little bit of difference here because it's continuing historical use, but I 100% agree with the concept of what's being said here. And it's something that we say a lot. The other one down at the public landing is the, what is it? All the, behind the Village Shop and the Lululeepin' and Fern. And that was one that we looked at and hasn't come back, the decks that extend off of those buildings. It's a, you know, it's a very similar thing. And there, since there's no mechanism, when we sign these, a select word before us signed them, and it's this revocable license that then goes somewhere, and there's no mechanism to trigger it to come back up again. So what, most of us end up just thinking that it's all private property unless you mark out what the town property boundaries are all the time. So I don't know if.
So, sorry.
Should we be looking comprehensively? Like what?
To correct myself, or Janice and Jeremy both corrected me. We do charge a $1,500 fee.
To this one?
Yes.
Oh, how interesting. But none of the others have.
None of the others, but this one we do.
Yeah, I, I thought I'd read 1,500. I was just checking. I was doing, I was doing my hand.
I mean, and when I say none of the others, there's Harbor Dogs, they pay something. But it, it would be great just to have a document of, we're, we're trying to corral all of these agreements that we have. Is the best way to have, is there any way to not stop everything in its tracks and make people's businesses suffer, but also force some kind of a, an inventory or a, I don't know what the. I agree with everything being said. I don't know what the.
That's a whole other project.
This one seems like it already does have a cost associated with it, so it.
It has a fee. Yes, it does. I just found it.
Makes a little more sense just to.
Well, yeah, we have to, I agree with you, said about going across, but right now we're focusing on approving or not approving this agreement, which has a $1,500 fee in it. And I think that's a, not a bad.
So are they just, is it mostly, are they asking to transfer the existing?
No, this would be a whole new agreement.
A whole new license. This is a whole new license.
So the, is it the building owner in the past that has had this agreement with the town that, where did the $1,500 come from? Was it a passed revocable license from a select board that is an annual?
Yeah, it's a, it's an annual fee and whoever the last, you know, because I, I don't know beyond.
Right.
Whoever was the last licensee.
Right.
So they're saying, they're asking to have it be the same terms?
Yes. Yeah, and it's signed by both the property owner and the business owner.
Yep.
Or sorry, the.
Because with the other properties that have the.
The landlord and the tenant, who's the business owner.
Le Cava, yeah. Anyway, so the, the action here is do we approve or not?
Jeremy does have his hand up and so does Tom. I.
Oh, yeah, and I mean, you can bring him on, but he was just making the point that all of this stuff will be loaded into the iWork program as well. So it's not going to be.
Right.
I mean, and it's not going to be this sort of scattered digital record-keeping, paper record-keeping without an integrated system. It's all going to go in iWork now, so.
Oh, right.
That'll be very helpful and.
So it's, it is, to Tom's question, not everybody's, is it's 1,500 per year?
Right, yes.
Just to be clear on that. So do I have a motion to approve or not?
I don't know. Does Tom, Tom seems to have his hand up.
Tom, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. So when these things come up for renewal, as it does tonight, this is our opportunity to consider what terms we want to, if we are going to approve this.
Yeah.
I mean, this is our opportunity. So maybe it's not appropriate for tonight because this one's just coming before us now. But this is, this is something that the board needs to anticipate and the town staff needs to let us know that this is something we need to anticipate. We have a, basically a lease agreement coming up. And do we want to renew it? And if we do want to renew it, under what terms? And the thing that I'm most uncomfortable with about this is that we weren't prepared that way. We didn't know there was a $1,500, essentially a lease, annual lease for this. And we had no opportunity to have some discussion with the person or the entity that uses this space about whether those are acceptable terms to them, whether those are acceptable terms to us.
Well, I guess part of this is everybody being prepared, coming to meetings and reading your packet in advance.
Thank you, thank you. I was gonna make that comment. It's our, this isn't a packet. We should have read it. I did. And I thought there was a fee in it, but I had to go back and find it. And you're, I agree with you, the more advanced notice we have is great, but that is in the packet. It should have been read by all of us and our bad.
So, wait, but just, sure, so, so it's in the packet, but what's the process for us to go about a renegotiation process?
It would be tonight. If, you know, you come prepared, you have questions, you have amendments you'd like to make.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do it then, Audra. Is the, is the tenant in the audience?
No.
Okay, so how are we prepared to renegotiate with the tenant?
We're not. We're just trying to lay out the conditions the town looks.
Who invites the tenant to the meeting?
Oh, so we would, I think what we would do is we would say we have some concerns and we would direct Audra to go back and negotiate different terms, I think.
I would suggest that the preparation, the preparation comes from the town staff. You let the tenant know.
We prepared it by creating a packet, putting the agreement in it, and your all, your responsibility is to read your packet.
One at a time, one at a time. Tom, one at a time. Let Audra finish, please.
I was gonna say, our preparation is, somebody comes to us and asks us to do this, we draft an agreement, we put it in your packet, you read it, you show up the meeting prepared with anything that you would like to change.
Correct.
And you can decide, we're not ready to vote on it because we have things that we'd like to change and we'd like to speak to the owner, or you decide you're prepared and you vote on it tonight.
Correct.
And by the way, the owner knows it's on the agenda of the select board, so they can also show up.
If they want to.
If they want to, as some business owners comes when their licenses are for, for renewal.
Yeah, the negotiation process goes through the town manager, not through the select board. No, select board, we can make our comments, say we, we, we won't sign it unless these things are in it and Audra has to take that back to the owner and have that discussion. We don't, we, that's really the way it works.
So this is one of the. So I think in terms of, I know for, after being here for a few years and having these agreements kind of come up, it's taken me a few years, really the entire time, to get a little bit, I guess, savvier and sort of understand what's going on, like, okay, this is our opportunity, kind of like what you're seeing right now. I agree that overall there needs to be, just for the benefit of future decision-making in town, there needs to be a little bit better, just a little bit more from, from town staff, maybe in terms of an introduction, like assuming for us, like, hey, guys, so this is your authority here, this is your opportunity. I just, I sometimes think you maybe give us a little too much credit, like for.
And I agree, but I, I can't know about this if you, if you all don't read your packet and come.
But, I mean, even you, you forgot about the fee too, so we all make mistakes.
No, absolutely. I'm just saying from now on, if this is, if this is, if you want more information, if you want to be able to negotiate these things in advance, I don't, I don't know what questions you're going to ask unless you.
I mean, sometimes we might need a recommendation.
Unless you ask me ahead of time, I guess.
Be careful here because.
So Janice says.
The packet comes out on Fridays. We are supposed to read the packet as, just quickly. The reason why the packet comes out days before is so you have time to ask questions.
Right.
You know, it's my bad if I didn't ask some question about the revocable license before the meeting. If you have information you want to get from, to make your decision, that's part of it. But, you know, this, yeah, I think we're getting a little off track here.
But we're missing opportunities as a board sometimes because we don't see all these things as connected. So it's not a criticism really of, of anything or anybody doing anything wrong. It's just that, like I, Janice made a comment in the, in the chat saying that she has an internal spreadsheet that has all of the license agreements.
She does, she does.
In there. That is new information to me that would be helpful as we, as we go forward and we approve this or don't approve this in this sort of piecemealed way. It's, you know, it's, it's hard to know that, okay, well, we just approved this, but then we're going to get, in a couple months, we should recognize, we're going to get another request that's similar, and then we're going to have to justify our response to that based on, it's helpful to know that there are a lot of these, I guess is what I'm saying.
I totally disagree with that because you have to face what you have at hand. And nothing is going to change my opinion if I know a similar one is coming up in two months. What do I care?
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Especially revocable agreements.
Revocable license, you know.
They're each different.
It's just not leading to the greatest outcome.
Some of them are on, like some licenses, you know, like are millions of types of business licenses and liquor licenses, they're on a cycle. We, you know, we know when they're going to expire, we know when they need to renew. Janice has a whole process of notifying people and.
And it's not our job to.
No, no, that's, that is a service above and beyond that we, we give to our businesses in town. Notifying them, taking, you know, taking a lot of the responsibility off them to help them with that. With the, with something like this, that's dependent on Stuart getting a tenant who's going to open a restaurant, who decides they want to use the patio. So we can't anticipate something like this coming up until it does.
So I have two questions. Stuart is responsible for the $1,500?
I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how he works that out with his tenant.
Because we have two sign, we have two parties.
Yes, yes.
So he's. So my question is, I just want to know if somebody doesn't pay their 1,500, who do we go after? Is it Le Cava or is it Stuart or is it both?
Both of them, because they both sign it.
And the second question I have is, how is the $1,500 calculated?
That's, so again, I have no idea because this was used as a historic.
So we're, we're just, oh, Janice is on as well. Okay.
Does Janice know?
But, I mean, so my, my concern is that that fee may be too low for that piece of real estate. And so how do we, how do we evaluate this? I mean, I, I would charge them $5,000 a year.
We don't have any fee schedule.
We don't have any fee schedules or calculation or.
Tom, one second.
Our staff recommendation would sometimes be helpful.
Janice, did you, did you have any comments on that?
You're muted.
Janice, we can't hear you.
You're really good. You're still muted.
You push the talk button.
Nope, you're still. She's not actually muted by the system. She's.
Maybe her speaker in our house or something.
Maybe the speaker's not on.
It would be a microphone, but.
Well, while you figure it out, maybe we can listen to Tom.
Tom, do you want to make a comment?
Yes, thank you. So when was the last time, when, when was this $1,500 per year fee set?
In this agreement.
No, when.
No, no, no. It's, 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 they're using the same terms than the previous one.
Yeah, I mean, so any business in town, we, I think, I think every business in town has raised their rates in the last five years. Is this, is this a five-year agreement, the previous agreement?
Do we have, in the, in the packet, and I'm sorry, I should know this, but it was there, is there the previous agreement? Was that in there too? We only see, so you took the previous agreement and created a new agreement from that.
And put their name on it.
But it would be helpful to see the previous agreement, just to under, you know.
Previous agreement is the, is the past. It doesn't matter. I mean, I think we, no.
We saw the previous agreement for all the other.
My point is.
It's the same.
Again, this is our opportunity.
It is, it is.
To look at this.
It is.
And decide whether this is something we want to continue. And it's also obviously an opportunity, and the board's taking this opportunity to discuss how we want to handle these situations in the future. But we definitely need something from the town staff that gives us a historic perspective of where this was, how this came into place, why it's built like the way it is, when was the last time it was negotiated? If we want to make changes, how do we go about that process?
If you want to make changes, you just need to, if you, for example, if we don't think the fee is high enough, we can recommend a higher fee. That's, that's what we can do. We can do that right now. If, you know.
Yeah, I was going to do that one. Everybody else.
Well, go ahead.
Okay. The first license was set in 2013 for five years and they only paid the first two years. And they only paid the first. Two years ago, Stewart didn't, not own the building back then. And the 1,500 was set by previous board 10 years ago. And it was supposed to have a certain percentage increase every year.
So we took no action, we took no action when he didn't pay?
Sounds like, sounds like there was no increase in fees for a number of years.
So who was responsible for implementing that increase in fees? It wouldn't come back before the board every year. Wouldn't that be town staff that was responsible?
No, no. Not, Tom, if it was written and said 2% per year, it's automatic. If it says, it's usually be at the discretion of the board.
I know it's automatic, but who makes sure that gets paid?
Well, that's, that's not the board's job, that's the town's job. But it, it.
It's a lot of work for it. I mean, what I'm understanding is that all of this stuff is a lot of work.
Yeah.
I guess maybe what I need is a recommendation from you, Audra's, the town manager. You know, this is kind of an issue that in the future we might want to do better. There's only so much we can do now. Like what's your recommendation for how we would handle this right now without like damaging us for the future?
Don't look at this the same way you looked at the Hockers and Peddlers process. There's a reason why this is different and that reason is that this little slice of town property that we're talking about is right up against the edge of the building, like of a, of a private building. And this is for like a private business to be able to expand out onto, you know, property that's owned by the town.
Right.
That's why we use this mechanism. It's the same thing with when private residences want to do the same thing. We use that same mechanism. So I think that, you know, for cases like this where it's businesses that want to encroach onto town property, this is a perfectly reasonable way to do this. As for the value of, of what that is, that is incredibly subjective. And if we were to do like, for, for the amount of land that we're talking about, to do something other than just put like a best guess is a huge waste of resources and time.
What's a parking spot worth? Like, because.
I would say a parking spot is worth $1,000 a month.
A month?
Yes.
Because that's essentially what it is down there. It's if it's there, somebody could park there and instead of parking there. Well, I mean, some, I mean, we can debate that, but it's close. And so they're going to be parking on town property instead. So it should be reasonably consistent with the cost of a parking space, but we don't have, we don't.
I don't believe you can put a car against that building and not stick out in the street. That's.
It doesn't matter. I mean, I think, I think the reasoning, if I may speak for Allison, which I don't like doing, but the reasoning, it's roughly the same kind of area. So we should charge the same price for the same, for the same space, right?
What's the same?
Because we could have made it a paid parking spot for a paid parking.
What do we recommend for the price then? Make a recommendation.
I made a recommendation that we charge them $5,000 a year.
Oh, right.
I did. That, that's my recommendation. It's prime, prime real estate. You, I mean, we can't, that's my own.
And I, I couldn't support that.
You think that's too high?
Yep.
What would it cost if we went back to the 2% 10 years ago? Can we do the math on that, which was the agreement?
It's probably in the order of 2%, so 1,500, 2%, you're talking about. No, 20, 20, 30%. It would be about between 2,000 and 2,500.
At least we've made an agreement that was generally accepted 10 years ago and we have a basis for it.
What does Harbor Docks pay? I forget. Is that around 3,000?
I don't remember.
I think it was Rockland Food Trucks paid 3,000, right?
There's some credibility in what Tom said because you would take, if you take a, if it was, Audra, correct me if I'm wrong, if there was in the original agreement, X percent or probably can increase it every year by an increment, it's probably in the order of 2%. Over 10 years, it's probably between 2,000 and 2,500. That's where we'd be today. And that's more reasonable. $5,000 is just a number out of the air to Audra's point.
So it's 1,500?
Yeah.
Sorry, it's equally, it's equally.
That's exactly the point Audra just made.
But we, I mean, so, so either we rent.
Make a motion, but I'm not supporting $5,000.
2,500.
22.50 and 50 cents.
It's a bar. In two, in two weekends, they cover this. Come on.
Math. Let's do the math of what 2% is from 10 years and we'll set it there. That was agreed upon. There's a precedent.
It's, it's, it's compounded, it's probably a bit closer to 2,500, but it's probably like 23 something. Because 2% over 10 years is 20%, but you compound it, so it makes it about 30%. So 30% on 1,500 is 2,000, so I'm saying a little more than that. It's probably around 22, 2300.
I'll make a motion that we approve this license for the fee of 2,500 a year with all other terms as written. Second.
Motion made in second. Further discussion. Tom, your hands up.
Are we going to continue the 2% increase?
Yep, at least. Why, why 2%?
The agreement, the agreement doesn't have any, any.
No, we can add it. I mean, seriously, 2%.
I can't tell. You're, you're upset, but you want 2% or you, I can't tell. No. You want it or not?
No, I don't want 2%. I want at least inflation.
Oh, okay.
At least.
Like, right. I mean, the town has to do, we had to do this whole COLA thing every year. I mean.
Like CPI, index of CPI.
Something, something realistic.
It'd be CPI or something that's, that's measurable rather than.
Then we should be doing that with every single license that we have and, because otherwise town staff is going to be like, oh, this.
Ocean is on the floor for $2,500. It's a yes or a no?
Right, and maybe we do COLA later.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four. All those, get this right. All those opposed?
Completely opposed.
Okay.
Might as well give it to them for free.
But you don't count.
But this is only, I mean, can, what's the mechanism for this to come back up again? I forgot.
Revoke it.
So I have to request that Bob put it on the agenda to.
Sure, next year or any time, actually.
That's the problem. Those are the things that never come back up.
You'd have to give a three-month notice for revocation. That's all.
At least with not 20 years like the yacht club.
No, it's not 20 years.
Sorry.
No. All right, onward to our next item, which as I recall, I lost track completely, is the, is the extension.
Oh, Janice has.
Paid parking pilot program for 2020. Correct? And there's, now there is a little missive that was written by the group in our packet, which I did read. Audra, do you want to just summarize what you?
Sure. So there, there are two documents. So one is a memo that I wrote, but it's a summary of the recommendations of the working group.
Yep.
We had a meeting on the 18th of January and we discussed the memo or letter that's also in your packet from John Burke where he summarized the findings of the pilot program from this summer.
Yes.
And we had a good discussion about that as well as some recommendations and some comments that were given to us by Scott Entwistle when he moved on to another opportunity. And based on both the analysis from John and the recommendations from Scott, as well as some other feedback that everybody had received, the group came up with the following recommendations. So some of them are specific to the paid parking program and others are more general about how we can make some changes to our current parking system so it just functions better going into the summer of 2023. So the first recommendation they had was to extend the program into the '23 season from May to November. And they thought that this was prudent, given that the program started fairly late in the, the summer of 2022 because of, you know, purchasing and receiving and installing equipment. So that the data that collected was quite limited.
Just to be clear, is this May 1 to November 30 or May 1 to November 1?
Yes, beginning of May, right, May 1 to November 30.
Thank you, sorry.
So, sorry, was there anything else you, okay. So they thought that running the, the pilot for the entire season would give us really important data that would be helpful for any considerations about expanding and adjusting the program. So there was discussion about expanding it to include maybe on-street parking, maybe other, you know, surface lots in town. But they decided, why don't we just go slow for another season, get a full season of data just at the landing before they make any other recommendations on expanding it. So they also thought that to encourage turnover, there should be a maximum of four hours. So as it is now, you're only supposed to park in those spots. I think it's a three-hour maximum.
Uh huh.
But they thought four hours would be a good amount of time to give particularly people who are visiting town the opportunity to come and do multiple things within the downtown. And it would still increase that, or still incentivize that turnover so that, yeah, absolutely. So the idea is it starts out with, you know, people can pay for, you know, one hour, two hours, three hours, all the way up to four. But after four, they really do have to leave and go to more longer-term parking if they want to stay. So, and that would be from the 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM window of time.
Right.
And also after the first two hours, the prices would escalate in the next two because that will also help encourage turnover. So the town also, or they encouraged the town to improve signage in the following areas. So adding more handicap parking signage at the public landing that explains that they don't have to. Handicap parking is free, so anybody who qualifies for it doesn't have to pay for that and making that pretty explicit. Also improving signage at the loading, unloading area for commercial and recreational boaters who use the public landing. So I think, you know, there are some people, particularly dinghy permit holders who might want to be, you know, unloading their dinghies who don't realize that, you know, they can just go there and use that loading and unloading area. They actually don't have to park and figure all of that out. So making that clear.
Or bailing out their dinghies.
Or bailing out their dinghies. Whatever, or dinghy maintenance, whatever they're there for. Also improving signage near the Chamber of Commerce building about the program because that seems to be an area where a lot of people go to if they want to find out more about what they need to do. And also coupon codes that would allow free parking for one Chamber of Commerce volunteers during their volunteer shifts, as well as residents age 65 or older who like to recreate at the public landing for several hours during the week, who aren't eligible for handicap placards.
What does several hours per week mean?
It's, it's all very informal how that's going to go. They basically show up and they ask for a coupon.
I see, I see.
Would that give them, sorry. That sounds pretty good to me. If, would that, is there a way to track that? So can you give them a code that gives, that automatically allocates six hours a week or something to?
Yes, we can do that.
We're going to figure it out, but they have to apply for it.
Right, no, I like that. Somebody that wants to come in and, I don't, I think most people aren't going to do it, but.
That's true.
But.
If it's limited number of hours per week, that's, that's.
For people that, that are, feel it's a hardship for them and.
It's for people who are not eligible for a handicap.
Yeah, that makes, oh, I, trust me, I'm aware of the demographic. I've had some conversations.
This category is half the population.
But do we actually have a way of doing it?
Yeah.
Yes, we do. Yep.
Okay, keep going.
We have published a list of, no.
But we can also restrain, we can have like 20 of them.
We'll see, we'll just collect the data. Will we be able to know how much it's used?
Yes.
Because there's a code. Everything's going to go through the machine.
I know, but I've been, like.
Yes.
Are we going to get the data from what happened over the summer at some point?
Do in the, like the report that you have has a lot of that data in there.
But we also have a new parking enforcement officer, young guy.
Oh.
Spencer Tulley.
Oh, right, okay.
And he's, he's mulling the data for us.
Oh.
So I'm going to.
He's looking at the enforcement data. So what John summarized in, in his report is data from the actual meters, but Spencer has Scott's enforcement data.
So I'm going to work with him on extracting more data from this.
Tom.
Thank you. My first question is, do we have any precedent for the increasing fees? I, I know it's stated, it's sort of a blanket statement that we're going to encourage people to leave by increasing the fees for the second two hours. But is there, you know, municipality or an entity that has, that has tried that? Do we have an example of what those increased fees would look like? I mean, to me, it seems like once you're settled in there, you know, do we have any data on that?
Yes.
Yes.
We do, and by the way, Tom, one of the biggest pieces of feedback we got from the group and from especially the Chamber of Commerce and from Scott is that the group that came to the advisory parking group all said that it increased turnover. They're very happy with that, with that project because they're, they see more turnover. They see people, also shared with Scott that it was easier for them to find a parking spot. So these are things that we really want to hear.
I bet you probably need your microphone a little closer, but.
Increased turnover and, and it's easier to find a spot. I think Bar Harbor has a scaling fee to encourage turnover as well and we can ask.
Part of Portland does too.
And part of Portland. We can ask John Burke for example of that.
He has a lot of other examples of where they do it too.
It's not uncommon.
Would John ever be able to just come back and do a quick?
That does lead into my second question, and that is, do we actually have data on the turnover? We, we, obviously we'd have to have historic data on that.
Yep.
And, and what the, what the parking was before we implemented this system? And then what the turnover was or the difference in turnover after we implemented this system.
I think, I think.
Just supposition, I would think.
Yeah.
So I think we probably don't have data on the turnover before the, this system was implemented simply because enforcement was not.
Yeah.
It was almost, we had, we had designed a system that was almost impossible to enforce.
Right.
And the way it is now, it is, it is almost self-enforcing.
Exactly.
Because pricing something enforces how, like it, it changes your relationship to it and how you use it.
Yeah, you'll, Tom's, Tom's question, you'll, you'll have that data, you alluded to it, Tom, after the summer, we'll have data.
A lot of it is in the report that John.
No, I, but his question about turnover year to year, we'll be able to look at what.
Oh, year after year, but I, I would say if you, if you don't read anything else in this packet, please read John's report.
Absolutely. So basically these are the four items related to paid parking because the ones down below are related to RVs and that kind of, these other two points.
We discussed that too. I mean, it was a really good meeting with a lot of ideas and suggestions from everyone.
Oh, do you want me to get back to the more general recommendations? So these had nothing to do with the public landing pilot. A lot of it had to do with RV and tour bus parking more longer term. So RV parking is, has been a real challenge because, you know, a lot of them, and it's, it's a, it's a genuine, they, they want to do the right thing. They just don't know where to go. And so a lot of them have been going into like the Knox Mill lots and parking across five spaces. The reason why that's particularly problematic now is because. is because so many of the people who used to park down at the landing and shuffle around all day are now parking longer term up at the Knox Mill lot, which is exactly what we want them to do. But if we have RVs that are parked across five spaces, that makes, that makes that difficult. So we're going to be, one of the recommendations was more enforcement of no parking for RVs in the Knox Mill lot and, and some of those lots, particularly overnight, as well as at Late Beach because that's a problem too. And, and the public safety lot. So instead of them going there, so tour buses and RVs will be encouraged to park at the Tannery in the Snow Bowl with overnight RV parking to be permissible at the Snow Bowl.
Only.
Yes.
Only.
Okay. Any comments on these recommendations other than they sound pretty good?
There was a lot of complaints about RV parking. We spent a lot of time on RV parking.
That's very, very common and the most difficult thing to handle in a small town.
Yeah.
I'm probably like the source of 50% of the complaints because I park up there and when I see them, I call in about it, so.
I thought you were the one with the RV. I was like, oh my.
Where did you get an RV?
So, but I also think it's important to, like, not stigmatize the RV people. There is a real negative attitude toward them sometimes because we haven't provided, and this is what I talked to Scott a lot about, it was really uncomfortable for him because, you know, he didn't, like, like you already said, he didn't have anywhere to tell them to go. But when you talk to a lot of them, they're really cool people that are coming to Camden to enjoy, you know, all the things that we want them to enjoy and they rented an RV and it's, I mean, so if, the Snow Bowl, is that?
It's doable.
You know, there's no way of them getting back and forth to town. I mean, that's where we give them Wolfie's Wheels number, I guess, and.
A lot of RV people drag their own cars. A lot of RV people have little bikes, motorcycle, motor, bikes, motor. And/or if they're going to go to Hannaford for food, they can still drive their RV for that there. And then they, for the night, they, only time they're really there is at night when they're staying overnight.
So we're going to, and during the day, the Tannery is going to be encouraged. I have this like feeling in the back of my mind that that's going to need to be defined or cause.
Yes. Well, you be careful, we don't.
What about?
Where policing happens.
Right, but I don't know, like, where in the Tannery and then the farmer's market? And what about this, what about along the sidewalk on Washington Street? Or, we can deal with that later. Those are, those are.
I mean, the discussion, the discussion is, is basically, do we re-upping on a full summer of paid parking with the changes recommended by the advisory committee? I think the comments they made on the RV parking, we need to address them because it's a constant, constant issue, but that requires a, this is not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I like the, I mean, I'm very happy that you're planning on addressing.
It's just that we need to find a good spot for them and that doesn't take five parking places when they.
I mean, it's the same problem whether we do paid parking or not. I'm glad, it's great, sounds like you guys are talking about parking and making some good recommendations, so.
Tom, go ahead.
Thank you. I think the origin, and I wasn't on the board when this was originally brought forward, but I think the origin of this was to, to improve downtown parking, to increase parking turnover. And what, what we're receiving for data is financial data. I would like to see, and I, I'm going to support another season of this. What I would like to see is actual data rather than on finances, how much money it's bringing and such. I think that's ancillary here. I would like to see actual data on what it's doing for turnover.
So.
And I understand that we don't have the baseline prior to the monitored parking. But that's the sort of thing that moving forward, I would, I'd be more encouraged to support it, you know, full-time or long-term.
Yes.
If we could see that this was working, if it's primary purpose.
Yeah, good point, Tom. Thank you.
It is a good point and, and we can, we can track the turnover in the public landing against other surface lots in the downtown that we own.
Yes.
And use that as a comparison.
But I'm also going to, but I'm also going to put a caveat to the, to the turnover data we have for this summer because also remember that we were very lax in the enforcement.
Yes, yes.
So, so the true baseline, if you will, Tom, will be in 2023. Because we'll have seven months of data. We'll have enforcement from day one. So, so the conditions to create a baseline will be met. This year, we can take it as an anecdotal set of, of data and evidence, but, but the full baseline is 2023.
Audrey, do you need a motion from us to support the pilot program for 2023?
I make a motion that we support the pilot program for 2023 with the changes proposed by the advisory committee.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion?
I would, I would just want to say briefly two things. Could we, is this report by itself not out, not in the packet? It cannot be put somewhere on the website that we can?
So I'll post it under, you know, we have the paid parking program area. We'll put that there.
Why not?
Because just that document by itself, that's a, even, it might even be worthy of a news item. And then the second thing, I think the goals of it were multiple. And for, you know, some demographics, turnover would be the primary goal. For some, it would be revenue. If I've understood correctly, that turnover isn't necessarily a higher goal than revenue? Or was it? Do we have a defined primary goal?
I would say that the primary goal was how do we best manage our parking supply? So how do we, we best match supply with demand? Because we, we know from the, the study that we've done, we've got plenty of supply, but our supply is not meeting the demand because of, you know, areas that are farther away. People don't park in and areas that are close, there's a lot of competition to park in them.
There's a lot of costs associated with maintaining that supply over the long term. So I would just say revenue is just as important.
I would say revenue, I mean, I don't think we should kid ourselves that revenue is going to be really important to this program.
Right.
And also I think it's going to be very important to the citizenry in, in supporting this because if it continues to be as financially successful as it has been, it has a potential to offset a lot of costs in the budget because it's an alternative source of revenue as opposed to taxes.
With that said, I want to move to all those in favor of the motion that's made and seconded.
Aye.
Thanks, Tom. It's all unanimous. Thank you very much. Onto, well, there's one Victor license renewal for Fresh Restaurant and One Baby Landing. Could I have a motion to, for that license renewal, please?
I make a motion that we approve the renewal of the Victor license for Fresh Restaurant.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Discussion, all those in favor? Thanks. Thank you, Tom. And that's unanimous, 5-0. Next, a confirmation of library trustees, of which there are two in the packet.
Can I make a suggestion for this?
You can make anything on it.
For this item that we examine each application individually?
Yes.
Please?
Oh, no, we don't, we don't have to address any as a bulk. We can do individual. There's no problem with that.
Thank you, Chair.
As a point of order, our bylaws state that if we go past a nine o'clock term, we must vote and approve that we do that.
Nice.
That's, that point of order was taken. So.
So do, but, but do we vote to put a time limit or just that we continue until we're done?
You can do a couple of things. You can shut.
You seem to be.
A total approval of going beyond.
You can shut it down. You know, your staff would have voted for the board. You could pick a time to shut down because before, I'm waiting for Tom to fall on his face.
That's what I was thinking of mostly.
Whose time zone?
You're correct. That's what we wrote. What do you want to do, Board?
That we continue for another half an hour if needed?
Till 9:30.
We can, we can.
I don't, I'm open to suggestions.
I second.
Oh, I don't, I'm just made a.
I second that we, I, 9:30 seems reasonable to me.
Is anybody, okay.
How many more things are on the agenda?
9:30, all those in favor? Tom, you shouldn't vote yes on that.
I was going to say, I feel like, I feel like there should be like Tom-led, given the time zone.
Let's not talk anymore.
I probably should have gone for 9:15.
If we have to leave some things off, we will. But right, the two most important, we got a couple of confirmations here. And one I'll discuss in the second one. But this one is for, two individuals have been nominated by the library trustees for membership. We'll take, which one first?
Elizabeth.
Okay.
I would move that we.
I, so I don't know, I don't know Elizabeth, but, but I was at the Library Board of Trustees when, when the vote took place and she was a pretty smooth sailing approval from, I think the majority, I mean, more than the majority of the board, almost unanimous, I would say, so.
It was unanimous, but.
It was, it was unanimous?
My reports are all secondhand, so I don't, I wasn't there, but.
But, but I know she had a high rate of approval. I think she has a great background and she's willing to serve and I think she would be a great Board of Trustee. So my recommendation is that we.
You're making a motion?
I'm making a motion that we approve.
Have a second.
Elizabeth.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, including Tom. Thank you. Sorry?
Did we get the last name? It's Elizabeth Sanders.
I said Elizabeth, but please, Caitlin, add the last name of Elizabeth. Elizabeth, I apologize.
The second nominee, Dennis McGurk, my notes.
So this, from my attendance at the Library Board of Trustees, this nomination was, led to a much more expanded conversation. And mainly, my, my take is that in the past, I mean, Dennis has been on the Board of Trustees in the past and, and I don't know this person, but from my understanding is that Dennis and the town, Dennis does not participate in creating a collaborative environment with the town. And I think it's really important because of all the issues we're going to have to face with the library. When we talk about the seawall, the dam, all those things, it's really important that we have a Board of Trustees with whom we can have open conversations and we can have disagreement, but that we can find common ground. And from what I understand, I'm not sure Dennis will help us find, find common ground. So I, I have a concern about this nomination.
Okay, thanks. Alice, go ahead.
I, I know Dennis and I, I personally can find lots of common ground with Dennis on, on many issues. He's a really smart guy. And even on the, I've talked to him at length about the dam and the seawall and there are many areas of common ground there. I share the concern about the, the fact that it wasn't a close to unanimous or close to unanimous recommendation from, you know, the Library Board of Trustees. They tend to be a fairly easy group to get along with. And I think in mainly, the, one of the most important roles of the Library Board of Trustees is overseeing the parks, the amphitheater in the park, in Harbor Park. And, you know, Mary Louise Curtis Bach being the, the donor that gave a lot of the property that we most enjoy in town was gifted by her with certain deed restrictions. And I have seen over the years that many times when there seems to be broad consensus among residents that they, they want something, you know, picnic tables, for instance, it's a, a very, you know, small example. But I remember, you know, especially with the Village Green, so many people saying during, during COVID, hey, can we just get a couple picnic tables on the Village Green? And everybody seemed to agree about this very, this very simple thing. We've got this town space. We'd like to try to do this for a little bit. And that, the, you know, the interpretation of gifts of deed and commercial activity and things like that over the years, there, there are different ways of interpreting the wishes of, of Mrs. Bach and.
Are you saying that Dennis doesn't agree with those interpretations or?
I think that there's been, what I've seen is a, a very rigid interpretation that I don't think, or has been shown, not, not to necessarily reflect the opinion of the Bach family. It may have reflected the opinion of several of the members at a given point in time. But I think that with these amazing town resources that we have, we should be looking a little bit more broadly. And, you know, certainly if all of the Bach family has a, has a concern, that should be, I think there are different ways to interpret history and that some decisions that have been made in the past have been like really forcefully advocated for and prevented us from taking advantage of, of these resources that we have and that they haven't really necessarily reflected the feelings of the Bach family. And I'll say when we, when the picnic tables thing, we, we got a letter. So anyway.
Alison.
Yeah.
Are you saying that Dennis does not have those same values that you're speaking of right now, that Mrs. Bach may have written down? What?
I mean, I'm not going to speak to anybody's values.
Does that have anything to do with Dennis?
Ye, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You think that he will uphold those sort of values? Or that he will not uphold those values?
The values are not entirely objective. So things like whether there, I've, I've seen a tendency from him to speak from a perspective of believing that he firmly knows what Mrs. Bach would have wanted or not wanted. And a tendency for other people who are not as maybe well-versed on the issue to assume that that's correct. But when you actually dig a little deeper, there's, there are a lot of things that Mrs. Bach wanted that don't come into the conversation. And I, I just think that there's, that he's, you know, Dennis has been on the board in the, in the past. He can contribute, can continue to contribute as an advisor, as a volunteer. But I have heard so much from residents that they would like a little bit more of, maybe a reexamination or a more flexible view of what Mrs. Bach really wanted, not just what happened to happen at one point in 1931. And, yeah, I just think there might be better candidates out there.
Other comments?
Mostly it's the fact that it wasn't a unanimous, it troubles me that it wasn't a unanimous. You know, there's disagreement in the Library Board. If, if there had been complete agreement there, I would say, okay. I, I trust that there was a robust conversation and that, but I just, I'd be more comfortable with a unanimous recommendation.
And I think, I, I think that Sophie hit a point that's important from my perspective. And that is, I, I have believed since my time on the board that the relationship between the board and the town and the, and the library has been strained. It's, and it's foundation is on the core of the, well, just lack of specificity, whatever the word is, of what's in the agreement between us. It doesn't cover stuff. For example, the root of it is that we need all these things, town, write the check. I'm exaggerating. They need help. I get it. They, they work miraculously hard to go out and find money to fund their portion of what they need to do. But that, that bridge needs to be, needs to be mended and it takes, and I'm saying this because Dennis and I are really not very different. He's a little younger than me, I think, but we come from the same generation. And I know this because I would not want me to be on the Board of Trustees of the library. And I would expect me to be voted down. And the reason is, is because what I, I learned in a similar environment to what, what he learned in business is highly not applicable today. If you spend time, as I have, talking to Gen X, Y, and now Z, my, my mouth is open because they don't relate to what the stones that I honed my sword on for 40 years in business. And I have, even sitting in this chair, I have had to temper some of that. And I have even sitting in this chair, I have had to temper some of that, otherwise I would kill myself. Because it's really this is not this and it's not a personal insult to the person. It it's what we were Dennis is extremely detailed. I love talking to the guy because he's technical like myself and that kind of thing. But I don't believe the board needs people like me and Dennis at this point in time. Tom?
I don't know Dennis, but he was recommended by the library's Board of Trustees. He achieved a majority at a minimum. He his name is on this letter. What is our alternative if we choose not to name Dennis to the Board of Trustees?
They would have to go back to the board and
They have a flexible number of board members.
Yeah, they don't have to have a specific number. It doesn't cripple them in any way, if that's your question.
It doesn't prevent them from operating.
Yeah.
And I mean, really, this speaks to the the larger issue of we don't tend to address this comprehensively. We don't we, you know, for the first few times I voted on Library Board of Trustees members, I didn't really understand what their role and authority was. And then I've had for years town residents saying, well, why can't the town do this over here? Why can't the town do this over here? Oh, well, that's a matter for the Library Board of Trustees. Well, who chooses them? Oh, well
We do.
We do. And so I this is this is uncomfortable for me because I I like to approve recommendations. But I've too many times had to explain to people a decision that is just difficult for me to defend because I am, you know, we're we're putting our stamp of approval on these people who get to make the final decision about all things pertaining to the library, the amphitheater, and and Harbor Park. You pick, you know, picnic table, whether there can be picnic tables. I'm it comes down to a very simple thing. I'm afraid there might, you know, one day not. People like the picnic tables in Harbor Park. Dennis worked very, very hard to try to convince everybody that Mrs. Bach would be turning over in her grave if she saw picnic tables on the Village Green. He was almost very successful because he's very persuasive, but it it didn't turn out to be the opinion of the family. So
So the example you just used is an example where Dennis was a voice of dissent, but those things were still approved. I I don't I don't actually have a issue at all with having a different opinion, a voice of dissent, somebody who might have a different vision or maybe even a historical perspective. That's why we have these boards. That's why not one of us makes all the decisions. I don't see any reason to turn him down. He was approved by the his peers or his potential peers. It was a majority vote. And you know what? Then they have their own forums, just like we have our forums. And in the end, we vote, we vote, and we agree that the majority rules. I don't see any reason to turn him down.
Okay.
Sure, I guess I would, you know, there's the minutes aren't available from that meeting or it's something I'd certainly be willing to to reexamine. But I'm putting my seal of approval on something, and I don't have enough information to feel confident about it tonight. But I I see a lot of value in dissent also. I think in the past, the library has not wanted, you know, people on really strong on one side or the other. They might not want me.
Right.
Anyway, I yeah, I can see a lot of value in what Tom is saying, but I don't have enough information to feel
Was the was the session and discussion open session for approving him as trustee or a closed session?
It was it was open.
They did things differently, though. They did. There was a secret vote.
No, it's a secret vote. Yeah, it was a secret vote on Zoom, and so you could see the percentage. But I I mean, the the conversation before the vote was extremely contentious. I was not expecting this. So
Can we can we get a hold of that information?
We can ask for the minutes of the of the meeting.
Minutes only? There's no video?
I don't think they recorded.
But it's not. You have to be there in order to watch it. It's a little different than how we operate. There's nothing to prevent them from from making the recommendation again and having us reconsider. It's not the same as our other committees or the like the planning board that needs a minimum number of people. They're not at that level.
I mean, it was the fraction was really generational also. It was very clear.
So I'm just gonna put it to a vote. I
Yeah.
Propose. Sorry, what do I say?
Do you maybe you try and propose to
Do you want to confirm?
Decide on
To vote and approve
Approve.
Her, the library's
Trustee.
Recommendation of a trustee to appoint Dennis
McGurk.
McGurk.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Motion. Sophie beat you to it, Tom. But further discussion. All those in favor? Tom is in favor. All is opposed. All right, four to one is not approved. Again, I would love to have more information from the library on the on the pros and cons and what they were rather than, you know, because my only concern is all of ours is that Dennis doesn't take this personally. He's a great person, and I tremendously admire him. But I think there's a more substantive issue lurking in the background that we need to address. Now, if in some way we can get some information from them, that would for, you know, that would that's fine. If we can't, we can't.
We should also probably coordinate with the Board of Trustees on how they would like us to how they handle interest in being on the board. I think I heard at one meeting that there's an open process where people can express interest. But, you know, we when we have that committee interest form that we give to people and they kind of see all the opportunities for being involved in the town. It might be good to say, you know, if you're interested in these parts of town, this is, you know, contact the library or contact so that
I agree. I agree. I want to move on because we only got five minutes and but most but but to that and this not because of the five minutes or whatever time we have. I think it was my bad to put this on the agenda regarding the Budget Committee because I've had I've had
I'm sorry, Bob. We haven't. We haven't approved Liz.
No, we did.
Did you vote on Liz?
We did.
On what?
We approved Liz.
We did vote on Liz?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we did, Tom.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm surprised you're still upright.
Only unanimous vote tonight.
It was not memorable enough.
That's right. I
Got it in the minutes.
We have a I've had a number of people said, I didn't know this was being vetted number two. We have a limited number of applications. And I don't think I would recommend tabling this till the 21st, and it must be done on the 21st.
It must be done.
It must be done to get, you know, I always when you have, you know, five seats and five applicants, that's that's not that's doesn't wait.
I also I'm I know this is not an agenda item, but I want to throw this out. We really need to we need a charter amendment and how Budget Committee members are because it's like this weird hybrid system that they created where you are supposed to fill out a committee interest form and also get your name on the ballot, which doesn't work. That just those two things are cross purposes.
Should consider that.
We need to draft people. That's the only solution.
I will make a motion that we table. Is it H?
Uh, yes.
The Budget Committee, and I request that Bob puts it first on the agenda as it can land so we make sure that we get it done in the next meeting on the 21st.
It has to be done on 21st. The motion should be
Yeah, but we don't want to do it when we're all foggy and foggy grained at the end next time.
Fresh and bright eyed.
I have a motion to table till the 21st, February 2nd by Sophie. All those in favor? And Tom says yes also, so it's unanimous. Audra, can you do a brief management?
I wrote stuff up, but I'm
The peer, the peer moratorium, extend the peer
The peer
Moratorium. Consideration of extending the peer moratorium? I swear that was on the agenda.
Yeah, and and it's
Where we're supposed to be on the agenda.
Don't we need? I saw it on there.
It's on there.
Where? Tell you what, we need to we need to set a date. So I would I would request the board, and this has to be a two thirds vote, a majority to approve, to add an agenda item to set a date for the for the public hearing for the extension of the peer moratorium.
I swear that was on there. I make a motion that we
We we add an agenda item.
I make a motion that we add an agenda item to select the date for the public hearing regarding the peer the extension of the peers peer moratorium.
Second.
Oh, I'll second.
Motion made second. All's in favor. It's unanimous, so it's 100%. So we have an agenda now.
To set a public hearing.
It was just the agenda.
No, no, I get what you just did, but we weren't the agenda item wasn't for us to extend it tonight. It was to set a public hearing for the
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
So that it can be extended.
Okay.
Which needs a, I believe, a seven day notice. So we're looking at the week of
It's the it'll be for the 21st. The public hearing will need to be on the 21st.
You have it during that meeting?
Yes.
Actually, we could. That's really a law. We didn't do that way last time. We had an actual public hearing.
I think there was some urgency based on dates.
It was.
Yeah.
I mean, I you want to put in a select board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I make a motion. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that
We set the date.
That we set the date of February 21st for the public hearing on the extension of the peer moratorium.
Second.
Motion made a second. All is twenty. Do you have discussion?
Nope, I'm in favor.
All in favor. Okay, thank you. It's five zero. Thank you very much. Now, three minutes of management reports.
Okay, I'm gonna go super quick. I have a written report. I'll send it to all of you as well as the backup stuff so that I don't have to go into detail. I received word from the school districts as to when they're having their budget hearings. So I will send you dates, times, links to the Zoom meetings. They're doing it all via Zoom. I wrote something nice about Tobaga Nationals that I have the timeline to town meeting memo that I'll send to all of you as part of this as well. And I think it's just good for you to all have an idea of what what we're up against in terms of timing for when we have to have public hearings and everything. I have a grant update. Things are going along nicely. I won't get into it. It's in in my report. I also wrote a long report giving background, current status and recommendations on the breakwater in response to the Harbor Committee's breakwater letter. So that will the that version of it will be attached to this with other background documents, but it'll also be on the agenda for the February 21st meeting. But it just gives you more time than normal to go through all of that and ask me questions.
Yeah.
Great. Select forward. Sophie?
I I attended the Board of Trustees, Library Board of Trustees. Excellent. Their budget is probably going to be flat, so they're good work. The second thing is we had a good flattish, flattish. Yeah, good. We had an excellent, again, meeting with the Megan T. Cook River Committee, Citizens Advisory Committee. Super good work with people rolling up their sleeves, signing up on subcommittees, getting on to different tasks to increase public outreach and communication. The second volume of the newsletter should be go out be going out probably early next week. And there's a speaker series that's going to be on the 7th of February with Nate Gray.
Not today.
Sorry, yeah, you're right. So 14th, probably 14th.
Valentine's Day.
No, the 21st. It's on the 21st. It's on the 21st. The 21st is a big day. Nate Gray talking about fish in the river. So and we have great attendance on the speaker series with at least 20, 30 people, lots of questions, lots of interest. So sign up. And and on the 21st, lots of announcements as well coming from the committee.
Tom? Before you fall down.
There was a a sidewalk by the planning board at the proposed subdivision at 440 Belfast Road. It went well. The the plans are interesting. I think there's some information that's available through Jeremy if anybody wants it. The planning board, the two new members, but the whole board in general is is really what we should be striving for in Camden. Very well qualified in their individual professions and backgrounds. Impressive to see. But if you're interested in that particular project, it's in the codes and planning office.
All right. Alison?
We have a Midcoast Solid Waste meeting tomorrow. That's the budget approval and review meeting. It will be here at 6:30. Information about that is available on the Midcoast Solid Waste website. One of the things that the board will be reviewing and hopefully approving in some way would be bag fee or trash fee increases. The small bags right now are $1.50. They would be going to $2. The large ones would be going from $2.50 to $3. And that is in an effort to try to keep the the budget or the assessments flat to the towns, to keep taxes about the same. The way that the interlocal agreement works with Midco Solid Waste is that bag fee and certain fee increases such as this do need to be reviewed by the municipal officials of each of the four towns. So you all would have sort of the right to say, hey, you know, we really want our taxes to go up instead of our bag fees. Mentioned this a few other times, but if that was something that you wanted to hear a lot more about, feel free to attend the meeting tomorrow or ask for more information later. I attended a meeting workshop with the Historic Resources Committee. There's a little subgroup that is working really hard on the Curtis Island project and figuring out how this Friends Group can raise a bunch of money to preserve it. They're looking, they spent the last several weeks, several months, really, Mike Scaling and a couple others just done an extraordinary amount of work to determine to which period in time they would be the most historically accurate or beneficial to restore the building buildings to. And, you know, there's a whole process with the, you know, national registry stuff. So they're doing a really great job, and it's great benefits to the town. And the Pathways Committee working on a number of things, work the especially an update to the Pathways Master Plan. They have that for both Camden and Rockport. And, you know, all of the priority sidewalks and things like that. So if that's anything that any of you have an interest in sort of weighing in on problem areas for pedestrians in town or opportunities that you want included, feel free to chime in. We'd love to have your input.
Thank you, Alison. Thank you, Rita. But Tom, especially thanks to you. God bless.
Yeah, wow, Tom. That's dedication.
Tom, get some rest and we'll. When are you coming back, Tom?
All right, we'll be back Saturday.
Enjoy the enjoy the trip and enjoy that beautiful part of the world.
Yeah, thank you so much. All right, good night, everybody.
Night.
Thanks.
Wait, I'll wait for the official.
Oh, a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Bitter end.
I almost forgot.
Motion made in second. All's in favor. That's even Tom, five zero. Thank you, Tom. Good night.
Good night.
Or good morning.
Good morning.